... authority meeting to order, and I welcome all those that are with us, both online and in here in the chamber with us. The first item of business for the authority is approval of our minutes from the February 22nd meeting that you have in your packet. Are there any requested changes, additions, or deletions to the minute? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, and is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those opposed? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, I'm gonna turn the next item over to Mr. Sandy. This is our sole item of business for the authority today unless other issues come up that you would like to discuss after this, and this is just with regard to potential contract extension with VADI, given the delays that we're experiencing with poles and so forth. So, Mr. Sandy, if you would.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. As you mentioned, the only action item today is to consider a contract extension with VADI, but then what that also means is that we'll need to amend our contract with Chantel for the deadline period, and so as you recall at your last meeting, we had APCO here and Chantel, and I will note that Brian Byrd from Chantel is on the line. If there are any questions for Chantel, he can jump in. One of the issues we've seen, and not just us across the state with broadband projects, has been utility permitting and railroad permitting have really seen a backlog, and that's because of just the sheer number of projects that are going on across the state. And so with that, in this last General Assembly session, there was a lot of discussion with the utility co-ops as well, because they've seen even more problems with the utility co-ops, because they're just not staffed to handle the number of requests that they were receiving for these projects. And so what that really gets to is it's really this make-ready process, and that really has to do with the utility poles. Literally each pole has to be reviewed to make sure it can handle additional wires and so forth that may be attached to them, and then in some cases, those poles have to be replaced before the project can go forward. So for us, as example, we've had over 10,000 poles for our projects that have had to been reviewed, and that's just Franklin County. So across the state, this has been a big issue, and it was a big topic in the General Assembly. In fact, the budget actually has some money allocated for this purpose, to help with this make-ready process, to help with the cost of pole replacements, but also, I think, to help with staffing up utility providers to be able to review these permits in a timely manner. So anyway, having said all that, we've seen delays, and we have been notifying VADI and DHCD in our monthly reports of those continued delays, so they're well aware of it. They've actually approved several other extensions in other localities across Virginia for the same reason. And so we, just because our deadline is coming up here in a few months for the VADI 2022, our recommendation is to go ahead and request that extension. So the way this would work is if you guys are in favor of that, we would send a letter to the state, to DHCD, asking for the extension. In this case, we're asking for a 12-month extension for VADI 2022, and we're asking for a 10-month for VADI 2021, and that's really just so the end dates will coincide. They'll both be in October of next year, if that's awarded. And it's very well that the projects could be completed before then. We just want to make sure we're giving ourselves plenty of time to get through that permitting process and make sure we can get the projects completed. So the process would work that we would send letters to the state requesting those extensions. If the state is in agreeance, they would send us a letter back, and then we would sign and concur that the extension has been granted, and then subsequently, we would need to go through a process with Chantel just to amend the agreement we have with them to say now the deadline to complete this is October of 2025. And so that's kind of the steps that we would look to go to. There is a revised motion.
I'll pass that out.
On your, in your area there, has a little yellow highlight at the top, says revised, and that's really just 12-month and 10-month is the revision there to just differentiate those. So that's really the gist of the request here, is to go ahead and ask for that extension. We're continuing to move forward. I will tell you my latest updated call with Chantel. They indicated that now they have, APCO has four crews working in Franklin County to help with this, so we are seeing some progress. Still not moving quite as quickly as we would like to, but we are seeing some progress on the permitting side, so.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any questions from the authority, from Mr. Sandy, or our colleague from Chantel on the line? Any questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. You have before you a revised motion. I'd like to ask for somebody to offer the motion, please.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to authorize staff to submit a letter to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development requesting a 12-month extension on the project completion deadline for the county's 2022 VATI project, and a 10-month extension to the project completion deadline for the county's 2021 project.
Thank you. Well, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Jamison.
I further move to authorize a deputy county administrator and county attorney to sign the necessary documents to execute this agreement reflecting the extension of the deadline to the county contracts with the state of Virginia and Chantel on behalf of Franklin County.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jamison. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion, I mean, excuse me, a vote to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that carries unanimously. Mr. Sandy, did that take care of your need from the authority to satisfy this request?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything you'd like to bring before the authority today? Any other matters?
Madam Chair, have we heard anything back from the attorneys and staff on the potential possibility of going to a committee and taking this out of the hands of the board supervisors?
I would defer to Mr. Sandy and/or Mr. on that matter.
I know we've made that request, and we've made that follow-up. I'll defer to Chris if we've received a response or kind of opinion yet.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I did have a chance, and I know Mr. Gwynn's not with us today. From what I understand, at his first read of the bylaws of the authority and the enabling legislation, yes, it can be other members besides the board of supervisors. It doesn't have to be the board of supervisors. If memory serves me correct, when the broadband authority was first initially established, and I'm looking at Mr. Sandy, I want to say 2017 circa timeframe, give or take.
Eighteen, maybe.
Eighteen, 2017, 2018. At that time, the board of supervisors felt it was, you know, important that the board at that time, because it was the establishment of an authority, before we really got into knowing what would really be in terms of broadband deployment in the county, what that would look like. And so, you know, since that time, annually, it has been the board of supervisors. But from what I do understand from Mr. Gwynn, and again, I don't want to speak for him per se, but our conversation has been that it can be, very similar to the Industrial Development Authority or the Planning Commission, it can be board appointees, it doesn't necessarily have to be the board of supervisors.
Cool. And with that being there, the only thing different, Mr. Sandy would still be over in charge of it. And correct, or do we need to wait till the attorneys? You'd still be in charge.
Like a secretary to the committee.
And then if it came back to funds or whatever, he's still gonna have to come back here to the board.
I would think so, yeah.
He would have to.
Yeah. Now, I will say, if it is structured more like an IDA, they probably would have the ability to authorize funding.
How's the IDA board structured differently than any other advisory board we have?
I don't know if I can really speak to that. I think it's in code, though, as a mechanism for additional financing opportunities and things like that, so that, I'd have to defer to Jim on that.
I know the IDA, I know the IDA actual signs, has to sign off on contracts and stuff.
They do.
But this is an advisory board, wouldn't?
Well, Mr. Chairman, it's actually Chapter 54.1 in the Code of Virginia, under Virginia Wireless Services Authorities Act. And I've got the act here if any of the supervisors wish to see it, but this is where it talks about the creation of the authorities and so forth, and it gets into detail, which is what I'm fairly certain Mr. Gwynn's looking at.
Yes.
So.
Madam Chair, I'd like to see, I'd like to have a copy of that.
Yes, sir, of course.
Got a copy, extra?
No, but I can ask our esteemed clerk to help me with that.
I don't want to do anything to jeopardize that, but I'm, for my part, a lot of times we're in these meetings, and they're talking about this broadband stuff, and it's way over my head.
And I think there's a couple of different ways that could probably change. You could have, you could keep the authority as it is, and then have like a technical advisory committee.
Okay.
That just reports to you, and the authority still makes those final decisions. So I think there's a couple of ways that it could probably work. I would just suggest maybe at the April meeting, the board, the county attorney may be ready then at that point to kind of explain some options.
For my part, Mr. Chairman, I'm concerned about voting on spending money and voting on these VADI grants. I think Steve's idea of if we want to go that route is have maybe an advisory board under this board.
That's what I'm talking about.
I'm afraid with time constraints, a lot of times we've had to make a decision like today, and if we turn this over to another board and then it has to come back to us, it might beleaguer the process out.
Any other authority members have any feedback on this matter?
I would like to try and find somebody to do it, but I don't want, I'm with what Mike says, if it's gonna mess it up. I don't want to jeopardize anything, but if it's a good possibility, I have good ideas of people who I think could do it, but I'm with Mike, I don't want to mess up any.
Well, you know, my review of the code section and then how we apply it as an authority, I remember since I came on, I always thought in my own mind that maybe we have a two, three, four-person advisory body or council that is, that reports to the authority, and these individuals be chosen, however the board decides to, these individuals having some expertise perhaps in telecommunications that can help guide us from an objective perspective of people in the field. Does that make sense?
That's exactly what I'm, I guess I'm not saying it the right way, or, that's what I'm wanting, somebody with, that's got the expertise when they, these acronyms mess me up. And I don't want to do anything to jeopardize, undo anything that we've done. I'd just like to have some, I don't know what to, I know I was in court one time, and I was in court one day, and they were talking about an expert witness, and one of the attorneys asked the judge what the definition of an expert witness was, and the judge said, "It's the person in the room that knows more about the subject than anyone else." And so looking at it that way, sometimes I would like to have the experience of an expert witness that understands everything that's going on, and I just think it would, my reason for bringing it up is simply, I think it would make the, this board, I'm not talking about disbanding this board at all, I'm just thinking that with the advice or the experience or the education of the expert witness would enhance this board and make it a stronger, more viable board. That's my whole purpose for asking for this, is to get this committee, or whatever what you want to call it, as a helper, more than a hindrance.
Yeah, and I would say to that, Mr. Chairman, that if we're not talking about disbandment of the authority as a whole.
No, that was never my intention.
So if we're not talking about that, we can yield to Mr. Gwynn for confirmation, but I do think that we've got latitude to appoint an advisory committee to the authority. Now, we can confirm that with Mr. Gwynn from a legality perspective, but if the board's in concurrence, Mr. Carter.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. My only comment, and I don't want to put Steve on the spot, but since Steve has been really running this program all along, do you view this as a help to you, Steve, or a hindrance? I don't want to do something that's gonna make it more work for you, I'll just put it that way.
I think it probably depends. I mean, I think in some cases, it would be another meeting, and, you know, another item to prepare for, but I do agree with getting some other eyes and some other expertise is not a bad thing. So I guess it just depends how often that group was to meet, and how long, and how many rabbit trails we may go down.
Right.
You know, so as long as we could keep it kind of directed on specific topics, I think, you know, it wouldn't be a...
Well, then my comment would be, if we form this, we let Steve work with this advisory committee, and you set the meetings how you want to work with them, and go about it that way, and make it easy for staff, and not pile on to staff's already burdensome job.
And I think, Mr. Carter, if the authority decides to do that, I think that we could work with Steve to get the charge of the advisory committee in place, and we can make that charge fairly narrow, or Steve could help us expound upon that so that it meets only at maybe certain times when we have approvals coming down that, you know, where we need feedback, but not as a regular monthly meeting. Am I hearing, am I hearing concurrence on that?
Exactly.
Okay. So what we can do, Mr. Whitlow and Mr. Sandy, if Mr. Gwynn could advise us and give clarity to us appointing an advisory committee at our April meeting, in terms of the scope and in terms of suggested numbers of membership on that advisory committee, and if there's any purview over how we select those individuals, would be helpful to the board, or the authority, rather. Okay, any other business, any other comments, questions? Mr. Tatum, welcome.
Sorry, I'm late.
Do you have anything on broadband? I don't want to preclude your comments.
I have nothing.
Okay. What we did with our motion was to extend, put an extension in with VADI because of the pole issue.
I was, in fact, I was asked just today about the Bright Speed, not Bright Speed, but River Street, and when were they gonna be coming in, and what's the status with them? And I explained to them that I had no idea, but I knew that they had run into a major snag with the AEP poles permitting.
Yeah. And if we're getting more teams on the ground, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Amanda, you know, our running point for us with AEP.
Yeah, for the Chantel. I can give you, I did ask Amanda for a brief update on the River Street today, and I can just kind of read what she had sent. So she said, "We currently have engineers in the field in all three counties." So if you remember, River Street is a project that's Henry County, Patrick County, and Franklin. They started to work in Franklin. They said they've completed the make-ready work for the first section on Dickinson Fiber Route along Snow Creek Road. Their distribution is reviewing their final pole replacements, and their contractors are on standby to finish the Dickinson and get started in the other two counties, you know, pretty soon. So they're starting those efforts. They have started the first piece over in the Snow Creek area, Union Hall slash Snow Creek area of the county is where they're first starting in Franklin County, and then they'll be working through that area, and then probably the next step will be over to Henry. I think the Henry one is somewhat reliant on the work in Patrick County, because I think they're feeding off of that work in Patrick. So unfortunately, the Henry part may be a little more behind the county, but it's just because of where the fiber's coming from.
Yeah, so, Mr. Sandy, would it be too much, I don't want to create work. When we have a broadband meeting, would it be too much to get a summarization of where we are on each of the project areas, like with Chantel and River Street, just to kind of get an overview of what coverage has been accomplished, what's in the queue, maybe with timelines and so forth?
Sure, we can do that. What I've been looking at is kind of, or what we've kind of been doing was traditionally having quarterly updates in person, but then in your Friday packet, a lot of times you'll see those updates as well from Chantel and River Street. So I can certainly verbally do those as well when we have those broadband authority meetings.
Yeah, and you all very good. Chris is very good about providing us information, so.
Yeah, and so the Chantel PowerPoints, that's really what we go over monthly when I meet with them, and we discuss the project progress. But yeah, I can kind of, if it would be helpful, I can try to summarize that even more.
Yeah, because I know we all probably get calls from our constituents saying, you know, "When can we expect to get service?" You know, "We know we're in the VADI map, but when is it gonna happen?"
And to that end, the Chantel did tell us at the last monthly meeting that we had, that I had with them a week or two ago, that they do now have the address search active on theirs. So if people go to the VADI website, that we have linked through our broadband page, if they go there to the Chantel site, they can actually enter their address, and it'll let them know when they're coming as part of this project. That's only gonna be for Chantel, so if you're in the River Street area, that's obviously a separate program, but for the Chantel areas, the address search is now active.
So can we put a link to that under our broadband?
It's already there.
It's there, okay. I think that's important for our citizens to know, is that they have the capability to address search, but it's through VADI, and that's the caveat.
Well, it's through Chantel, that's only for the Chantel piece.
Right, but, so is it a Chantel inquiry, or is it running through VADI?
It's running through Chantel.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, cool.
So I can work with Kevin, too, to try to get a social media post out there to just make people aware of it, but...
That would be great, thank you.
But again, it's not a, it's not every address in the county, it's gonna be those addresses that are in the Chantel service area.
Sure.
That'll give them an estimated time that they'll be able to see that service come to their place.
Thank you, Steve. Anything further, gentlemen?
Steve, do you have any update on either of the cell providers coming to the tower down on 890?
Yes, I did, trying to think of the dates. They are scheduled to get that done this year, get that lease agreement done this year, and get that on air. There were two, I was speaking with Mr. Gwynn about that, there was two Verizon possibilities. That was one, and the other was more up in the Union Hall area of the county. So those were two that Verizon was working on in that area, as well as Henry and Farham as well, they're working on. So those are the targets for Verizon to get kind of under contract this year and have them be built and on air. So those were the, those were the four Verizon ones in the county that I was made aware of.
But we don't have a date for that yet.
Not specific date, no. Some of that's gonna depend on the, any negotiations with landowners, and then getting the permits, getting the equipment on the pole, and getting it turned on, so I think their goal is by the end of the year. So they do, the cellular...
Told us that last year, though.
Yeah, the cellular providers, they put that in their budget for annually, you know, they have certain sites annually that they try to get to, and so, yeah, I was told last year that that was gonna happen last year, but, you know, that's, now they're saying it's this year.
Thank you.
Also, Nick, I would just mention that I've been doing some research on the Verizon situation, because they are not right now scheduling to put an antenna up in the Glade Hill area, at the Glade Hill Elementary School, and I thought that there's probably a really good business case to do that, and while that doesn't affect you, I've been trying to figure out who in Verizon might be a good resource to talk to, and I'm now connected with a pre-senior executive over all the engineers up in New Jersey. So I can keep you posted on my progress. It's very early on, but I might uncover something that could be useful for you.
That'd be great.
Mr. Sandy, just one question. With the Verizon looking at some of the towers up in Henry, Farah Mary, will any of this be part of the revenue share for like the one in Henry with the Fire Department Community Center at work?
It could be. I'm a little hesitant to give too much detailed information till leases, till they kind of negotiated leases, so, but yes, potentially, if it's located on any of those structures that we build, it would be, yeah, they would have to honor that lease agreement.
Okay, anything else, gentlemen? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the broadband authority meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Carter, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for your time this afternoon.
Thanks for your interest in the county government. We'll do our invocation, our pledge to the flag. I'll ask you to stand. Supervisor Mike Carter, do the invocation. Supervisor Nick Mitchell, do the pledge, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nice to see everybody here today. Nice to see all the fire chiefs and the public safety people here, superintendent of schools. I'd like to wish you all a happy Easter, and with that, let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the promise of spring. We ask that you will hold the sick and infirm in your hand and their families. In His name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Aren't we need to do approval or modifications to the agenda? The only modification that I want to see, that I see here, is the 245 other matters by supervisors. We need to strike that. We agreed not to really have any time constraints on our work agenda, so we'll scratch that out, and it happens when it happens. Anyone else? You got any modifications or changes? Seeing so, with that one modification, I might entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda as modified.
Second.
All in favor, signature five a cent, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same say. All right, we'll go right into our work session on the capital budget discussion. I'll turn it over to Mr. Whitlow to introduce Mr. David Rose in time constraints, as long as he wants.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Rose will be no stranger to this board. Maybe a couple of our new board members, Mr. Marshall Jamison and Mr. Dan Quinn. Kyle Lox from Mr. Rose's office was with us back in November. You may remember when Kyle did a kind of review with the board on debt financing of large capital projects, and of course, it's per the request of the chair, we've asked Mr. Rose to come in this afternoon, really look at a capital planning overview of the county's budget. He has had a chance to review the proposed county budget, as well as our five and our 10-year capital improvement plan. And so Mr. Rose is with us today to walk you through kind of his and his team's analysis of what that looks like, but then also here to answer any questions that the board may have, and the timeliness of this prior to our budget adoption here coming up in a few weeks. So, Mr. Rose, it's good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitlow, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again, David Rose, and look forward to our discussion today. Having said all that, you should, I think now, everyone have a hard copy of that, it's going to be up on the screen as well. I will move along fairly quickly on some of these sections, but then again, you've got that hard copy, and please do not stop me. As the county administrator indicated, we've been in close discussions for a couple of months now, talking about what is leading up to, of course, the 25 fiscal year budget. So with that, just for background, and I'm not going to belabor it by repeating these things, y'all could see it, but we, and myself particularly, have been working with you for probably 25 to 30 years now. And again, my goal and my role is just to give you our perspective, not to take sides, it's not to try to sell you anything, that's not our focus. Our focus is try to be an extension of you and your staff as it relates to making sure that the county continues to be financially sustainably sound, and you are. But again, we try to think about this generationally, as opposed to just a few moments in time. So we do a variety of things, and you can see here, and then one of those things I'm gonna talk about today is how to think about some of the dollars that you've got, some of the monies, and also how to safeguard them, because we really do believe right now it's a tenuous environment out there in terms of economically, and so we're somewhat cautious at best in terms of looking at things. So with that said... looking at things. So with that said, um, just a little background here, the county, and I was involved when Mr. Huff was in the administrator's seat, uh, received their first credit rating some twenty-five years ago. Um, they were nowhere as near as strong as they are today. We are basically a step away from what we call AAA. That's the highest we could possibly be. That's not by us. That's by independent folks out of New York and other big cities that look at you and others throughout the country. And they do that based upon a variety of things, one of which is, uh, your overall strength and your stability and your structural balance. Excuse me. So, that said, when we look at the capital planning, which we've been doing with you for years, we think about developing plans of finance that you give us your capital needs. We don't give you the pl- needs. You give us your timing, and then we give you some recommendations, how to make sure that it's sustainable, it's doable, or what it might mean if you do the things you want to do. So, some of the things you've done, um, you've created strong reserves. That wasn't always the case. Um, you've incorporated a twenty million dollars, that windfall when you went to twice a year collection. Let me be clear, that twenty million dollars, and I'll show you later, that twenty million dollars today spends off over a million dollars a year of interest, which further helps your general fund. It is going to help keep your tax rate down, and we're going to recommend that we continue to do that practice for the foreseeable future. It's also important to realize that if we keep this tack, keep these credit ratings high, then the, in an impact, if you would, of any future debt, any future capital is minimized by virtue of having these good credit ratings. So, that said, one of the things we spent a lot of time on, and previous boards have worked closely with us to do, is to set up some policies with regard to what we'll call your rainy day fund. It's called the unassigned fund balance. Think of it as your savings account in your own home, if, if we're fortunate to have one. You can see here, since 2019, you've steadily improved on that. At the same time, the overall budget goes larger. So we not only look at it in terms of dollars, we also ask ourselves, as a percentage of overall budget, how does it look? Our policy, when I say our, I'm talking about the county, is twenty percent. Think of it this way. Uh, again, you look at and say, if your overall, let's say, just go for a moment, if your overall budget was a hundred million dollars, twenty percent would be twenty million dollars. In your case, you can see here, you're at about thirty-four percent, which is a high watermark. That is quite good, and we feel good about that. And again, you can see it's good to have that cushion. That in part is helping us with a strong credit rating. But at the same time, you might say, well, how do we compare to our neighbors? And what you can see here is we are right there in the peer group median. We're right in the thick of other communities that by and large are somewhere in the general mid-Virginia vicinity. I don't look at, for example, Northern Virginia too closely. Couple of Southwest Virginia local governments, like a Washington County, uh, are good comparatives. But by and large, in this overall, uh, area away from effectively, mostly away from Northern Virginia, you're right there in the median, and that's a solid place to be. Okay. Why is a fund balance important? Again, not going to belabor that, but you can see here, if indeed some things happen that we don't want to have happened, things that beyond our control, whether it's natural disasters, whether it's a pandemic again, it's important, we believe, to have these dollars because nobody wants to ever say to the citizens, we'd like to raise your taxes at the most terrible time. So that's important to have this here. Okay. Some other observations. Um, the good news here, uh, and I think this is particularly relevant, given all the discussions that have gone on, uh, of late with regard to the, the budget and school issues, uh, is we also have some other dollars. Um, not only do we have that unassigned that I just talked about, but we have that twenty million dollars, that capital reserve. Um, our thinking there is to keep that in itself while that's earning such good interest, while that's helping to diminish, uh, the impact on the general fund. And at some point inevitably, we know there is going to be some very substantial capital projects. There are a number now that are in the, in the, in the CIP, but still even over and above any of that, we like to have those dollars there, uh, down the road. You also have some dollars in what we call the revenue budget stabilization reserve, as well as a debt service reserve. Um, again, all of these may sound like it's overkill, but I can also tell you, in the forty, almost forty-five years I've been doing this, that there are going to be times when things can whipsaw for local governments, and that can happen quickly. So we like to have these reserves. You are not always in this position, so we like to make sure we maximize keeping them, uh, as much as possible. All right. As I mentioned earlier, in our startings, um, it's important that the public realize that right now, for example, um, we are earning, uh, well over five percent on our money, thanks to, uh, the marketplace, thanks to your staff. Um, and that's all being invested in Virginia, uh, with state programs and local and regional banks. So again, uh, those dollars are substantial, uh, and that always has not been the case as well. So just wanted to point that out if I could. So, let's talk about general reassessment. Um, obviously, comes every four years for our particular county. Uh, as you may be aware, in Virginia, uh, local governments, no matter, cannot go any more than six years. Um, if we were south of us in North Carolina, you can go eight years. But again, as you, uh, get larger, uh, more involved, uh, four years is typically the, the longest that, uh, most entities like your size will go. Um, obviously, uh, places that are very large and sizable, urban centers will be, uh, doing that reassessment on a yearly basis. Not recommending it, just to give you a sense of that perspective. So what we understand right now, uh, is in that third bullet point, uh, there is talk, uh, of looking at that rate. Uh, it's currently at, of course, sixty-one cents. If it were to be equalized, it would be at forty-one cents. And there is discussion afoot, uh, by the staff of moving it to forty-five cents. So nominally, down sixteen pennies, but four cents higher. Yes. Indeed, make no mistake about it, that is an increase in terms of taxes on average by that four pennies. As you all know, every penny is roughly in around a million dollars, so that provides a net of about four million dollars. With that said, once again, give you a sense of how you compare. If you were to be in that mode and go to forty-five cents, uh, you would then be equal to Campbell, which recently did their, uh, revolve. Bedford did theirs as well. We work with both of them. Um, and so again, you would be, uh, highly favorable to the peer group median. I would point out that in both Bedford and Campbell's situation, each of them, you're talking for the moment about four pennies. Each of them did, one did almost five pennies, that was Campbell. Bedford did three pennies. So that was their readjustment, if you would. Um, for example, had Bedford equalized, they would have been down at thirty-eight cents, and they chose to go to forty-one, and they did that very publicly for the similar reason we're going to talk about here tied to capital. It was directly tied to their capital. I think the other important thing here, um, and it was not easy, uh, Campbell did likewise for their school needs and some other capital needs, is the recognition that they too are every four years. So one of the things that we want to make sure of is that when you set that tax rate and whatever you do, it's something that you don't have to revisit over the next couple of years, uh, because you've shot, let's say, too low. Obviously, if you're too high, you can always cut the tax rate. That's easy. But having to raise the tax rate a couple of years from now or a year or two from now, we'd like to see, hopefully could avoid that altogether. This is just historically was provided to us by your staff. Back in nineteen eighty-five, you were at the forty-five pennies, and potentially would be somewhere analogous to that, uh, given what we understand from staff. Okay. So a few observations. Um, and talking at length with staff and what have you, um, those four pennies, essentially, three of them would go towards capital, and one would go towards county operations. Now, that said, um, when we talk about capital, I'm going to give you a little sense in a few minutes of what happens and all of that. But what you do right now, one of your strengths, is that you do a very good job of spending ongoing recurring dollars, not to borrow money to borrow for capital needs, but you pay cash for a bunch of your capital needs. The three pennies here would allow you to not only do that, but do more than what you do right now, because there is that sense that the county is falling behind in taking care of some of these needs. And the reason we understand you're falling behind is through no fault of your own, but if you look at something, I, I think you said there's some, some fire folks here behind me, they could tell me certainly, but what I've understood from my clients is things like fire state, fire equipment has literally doubled and tripled over the last four years, everywhere, all over the country. So those dollars of what used to be, again, a hook and ladder is now two to three times what it was. So your needs don't go down, but the dollars that are needed to go there are certainly going up. So that's part of all of this, and I do think that your staff has been good about thinking out, again, over the next four years on how to make all this happen. I think one other thing I should point out, especially for the new board members, um, when I come, it's not always popular. I know I'm not, I'm not elected, uh, probably wouldn't get elected, but my job is to try to tell you what I think you need to hear respectfully, as opposed to maybe what you always want to hear. So nobody wants to hear that you need more dollars to keep up with regard to fire stations and fire apparatus and HVAC and things like that, but it's, it's important that at least I try to give you that sense of it and why, because it's not about the county not doing a good job. It's about outside forces that are impactful to you. So the last bullet point here, um, if indeed that four cents is not a reality, if you should equalize, um, what we think will happen here is that loss, if you would, would translate into about a fifteen million dollar hit in loss of cash for capital funding, um, as well as, again, making operationally doing some things, uh, easier. Um, we know also that what's happened recently with regard to the overall school composite index, um, I for one, um, am going to try my best, and we've been trying to say this, the overall school funding formula is broken. It's been broken for years, makes no sense. Um, and I think hopefully, uh, that will get addressed, but it's not going to get addressed in the next few months certainly, and it may not even be addressed in the next year. But it, it penalizes you and others, um, and it just makes no sense to any of us. So I just point that out. That further makes all of this more challenging. So, uh, since I'm on schools, let me just talk about, um, what is moving forward, which y'all have approved, um, and what is happening. Um, so let's start with on this page, this is your debt portfolio, if you would. Um, you have roughly forty some odd million dollars of debt outstanding, and your annual debt service in the fiscal year coming up is about five and a half million dollars. It then drops down, um, over subsequent years, kind of levelizes. Uh, but again, you're in a good mode, if you would. So that's what it looks like to begin with. So there you can see on this page, that light blue, that diagonal, if you would, that's the freed up dollars. So think of it this way, in 2025, you're going to have, Brian will budget five and a half million dollars, but in 2026, it drops for the moment. But there's some things that sort of fill that drop, if you would. And that is the middle school HVAC project that you've been fortunate in that we've been able to secure upwards of twenty-five million dollars of what we call literary loan. It's at three percent fixed interest rate, can't go higher. We've also been an applicant for up to twenty percent of a state grant. We'll find that out at some point here. Uh, and at the same time, you also have some other dollars that you've put aside. So all told, right now, we think that while we have a twenty-five million dollar capacity for the lit loan, we will only need fourteen million dollars. And we've got that factored in to all the plans. For some of you, uh, you may recall, I was here back in November, I think it was the twenty-third, the twentieth or twenty-third, and I presented all this. None of this is new. Um, this is all the same. Nothing negative has happened. It's just want to, again, reiterate all this as we talk about the overall county coming into this new budget. So nothing new here, no surprises. Just wanted to recap it. So with that said, on this page, you'll see that middle, it says MS, which of course, middle school HVAC, the lit loan debt service, we layer that in, and you can see, again, where the debt is, and then where it's projected to be. And I think graphically, want to show you that the good news here is that we never go above your current debt service. So we're not for existing debt and the school project needing the equivalent of those three or four pennies. That's not what we're looking for on that. We were able to do this project thanks to the way you're set up without having to do an equivalent tax increase. And for some of you that have been on the board for a number of years, you may recall that we first started talking about this middle school project probably a half dozen years ago, we thought that was going to cost us four to five pennies equivalent, and it ended up not costing the taxpayers any pennies. So we are ahead of the game as it relates to this overall project. So again, observations, I think I've made that. Um, however, um, what we're looking at now, uh, is some new projects, and that makes sense. So let's talk about that. So what you do, and what you approve, of course, is a rolling five year capital funding plan. And that plan right now, it's your plan, not our plan, um, is roughly fifty million over the next five years, and it consists of, about half of it is cash funded. So as I said, the way this county operates, you're structurally balanced historically, that's very impressive and important, that you can use basically fifty percent of your capital to be cash funded, uh, over the next five years. Next part of it is some carryover monies. That's about eight percent, or roughly four million. Then I'll just jump for a moment. Number four is some grant dollars expected at about two point four million. So what that leaves is about seventeen million dollars to be funded over the next five years with regard to overall new debt that's part of this. That's about thirty-five percent. And again, when the rating agencies look at that, when investors look at that, that's a very, very solid number. What would happen if we don't get those three pennies, but we still need to do some of these, we'll call it right now, cash funded, probably would have to convert that over to more debt. So the ratio would move from, again, fifty percent of cash funding would come down to a higher percent of debt funding. Um, can we do that? The answer is yes. Would I like to see us do that? The answer is no, uh, because again, things are just going to continue to stay expensive into the future. So again, I would like to, as your advisor, see us get those extra pennies to go directly and only to cash funding for capital. It'd be prudent, it's strategic, but again, no one elected me. I get that. So here is just the numbers by years, the percentage, as I said earlier, if you look at the debt column, it's seventeen million, it's thirty-five percent of the overall. Just wanted to give you that. So one of the things we're going to recommend, uh, no action, of course, today, but meant to be an educational discussion today. be an educational discussion today, Ms. Chairman, is thinking about establishing what we've done in the past successfully, is to set up what we call a line of credit. We'd like to go out, procure a line of credit after this budget is over, and set that up in such a way that that gives us the ability to draw it down strategically, only pay for what we draw down and when we draw it down. But having that ability, if you would, will continue to keep the pressure down from going straight to permanent debt funding in the next five years. So we're thinking of something like a three-to-four-year line of credit, which could always be paid faster, we could make it a little higher or lower than that seventeen million, but we like the flexibility. And the other thing we like importantly, is we like the fact that right now, you're earning a higher interest rate on the cash sitting in the bank than what it would cost us to have in a line of credit. So we would actually be effectively being smart about our money, and that's the way we think about this for you.
Can we take a couple of minutes here and talk about it while we're here?
Of course, that's why I'm here, yes, yes, Ms. Chairman.
You've heard the proposal out here, what's the board's thoughts on this, setting up this with Mr. Davenport and county staff going ahead and pursuing this line of credit for the stabilization of the budget, what's the board's thoughts? Let's talk about it for a minute, that's what we're here for. If you've got more questions or comments, or Mr. Rose that we can talk to, and staff is here.
Thank you, ma'am, I'm sorry. Said better? That we talk about this and not do that. Anybody got a comment?
I do, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Mr. Rose, good afternoon, wonderful to have you with us. I absolutely agree with the establishment of the line of credit. I do have one question as it relates to how we're structuring the debt over the next five years that you've presented. I'm not seeing anything in here for the CTE project that was representative in your last presentation, so I'm wondering why.
So again, the CT is not in here, you're right, Ms. Smith. What is in here is the approved five-year CIP, meaning what's already been sort of there, and you may want to correct me if I'm saying that right, Mr. Whitlow, that the money's right here on this page, maybe clarify if you want to.
Yeah, I think, and Mr. Brian Carter's there, Brian, you can jump in, but I think what the analysis is, is on the proposed five-year CIP over the next five years, of course, that CIP is updated every year. And so, David, I think we had some previous conversations regarding the CTE project specifically, regarding currently not knowing what the Virginia General Assembly may be doing in terms of school construction revenues for large school construction projects. And so, it's my understanding that's why you did not include that specifically in this analysis, but can be added as a side or an alternative, if you will. Look, it's still certainly a priority of the school board, and it's a primary priority of the board of supervisors.
Absolutely. So to take it a step further, Ms. Smith, as you know, when I was here back in November, that was prior to the governor putting his budget in in December, but when that happened, there was the two bills that then came with regard to how to look at the one percent local sales option, as well as uncertainty as it related to another school grant program, as well as some more literary loan programs. Because for the board's benefit, when we even first did the middle school HVAC project, we didn't even think about, I don't mean we didn't think, we didn't plan on literary loans or school construction, because that wasn't even known to anybody at that point. So to your point, Mr. Whitlow and everyone, I feel like with the CTE project, there's so many balls in the air as it relates to what the legislature will ultimately do and what might happen, and I think we're not really probably going to know all of that for a couple of months. But once that is known, that'll give us some abilities, we obviously take the lead of your staff, but will give us the ability to say, how would those projects, or that project, and other school projects be funded, or could be funded, and what impact does that have on the general fund? So again, as you all know, and you've been kind enough to let me come and be here on, we'll call it, capital planning discussions, you know, I think that will be a new possible topic, you know, probably it's now, I'm rounding off, it's now mid-March, probably more like summertime, it would probably make sense, we'll have a sense of really how the new fiscal year looks and all that.
So with respect to the, you know, I've been trying to watch the General Assembly movement on these bills, the one percent, of course, even if Governor Youngkin doesn't veto it, that's dependent upon a referendum.
Yes.
So that's still going to be largely in question moving forward. I know we're waiting on this other school construction grant that failed last year for all the reasons we are aware of, but is, am I correct in my assertion that there is some discussion currently within the General Assembly about potential school construction monies over and above that grant?
Yes, that's right, that is right. And so we've got that and literary loan monies, so there's two parts, you know. So again, it's sort of a work in progress. The one thing I would say, if I could, if I could say, Ms. Chairman, that referendum, again, shows you why I'm not elected, there have been nine local governments that have actually petitioned the legislature over the years to have a referendum, and all nine passed, meaning the actual citizenry, and some are close to us here, and most of our clients, they're, for example, it passed in Henry County, Patrick County, Pennsylvania County, Danville, and Halifax County, right there on the corridor, as well as Mecklenburg and Gloucester and North Hampton, all of our clients actually, interestingly enough, except for Pennsylvania. So again, I think the voters, at least we heard, was if it's very targeted and they understand it's not for general, it sounds like it has a chance to pass in a lot of these places. So I don't know if that's the case here, but we could certainly put that into our calculus, if you would, if you want us to, in some summer, or whenever you want us, for a analysis, if you would. So I think you're back at the line of credit, I think you would ask, Ms. Chairman, if I could answer any questions on that.
Mr. Carter?
Yes. Thank you, Dave, good seeing you as always. More of a comment than a question, I've always found Davenport to be very fiscally responsible, and I think when you can use someone else's money cheaper than using our money, that's a good plan. And my other comment is, can we put this real estate tax rate up on the county website so people can see how we compare to the surrounding?
I'd like to see this whole thing.
Can we have a banner outside?
I'd like to see this whole presentation go on the county website.
Yeah, but thank you, Dave, as always.
Hi, Dave. So the line of credit being seventeen-point-one million, and it's an estimated rate of four percent, right, and that'd be a variable rate that could change?
It probably would be, I think so, Mr. Mitchell. I mean, again, we asked for both ways, you know, variable rate, fixed rate, we get different responses, so could be any number of things, yes, sir.
And then with the twenty-year pay-up, and I'm with Mike, I found you, I think you guys know what you're talking about, and I think we have some of the best staff for being fiscally responsible. My only comment would be, when you have a line of credit, and you're looking to save money, and next thing you know, you're at twenty years, and it's got to be paid down to zero, and you've been paying interest on it the whole time, and then you borrow money to pay it off because you're at your pay-up, and all of a sudden, that four percent doesn't sound as good as it did, but I have the utmost confidence in staff that that won't happen.
If I, I think you make some good points. We're thinking a little differently, Mr. Mitchell. What I'm thinking here is the line of credit would probably be about three to four years. And at that point, depending upon what Brian or the county is earning on the money sitting there, we either will pay that off, or then extend that and create an actual borrowing. Because again, this seventeen million was always meant to be borrowed over roughly a twenty-year period. All we're trying to say is, you know what, let's not jump right in to a full fixed-rate twenty-year borrowing, let's not commit ourselves. In fact, some of those other dollars that I showed earlier, we might use some of those dollars to pay down, let's say, some of the line of credit. So it's not necessarily, what I like about it is the flexibility. But again, it's really, again, we can go a variety of ways, it's really meant to be a tool that we monitor on a regular basis, it's not very fixed that way, it's much more flexible. So that's how I think about it. And the only reason, if I could, is because like Ms. Smith asked about, let's say, another project, I like the idea that if we make these steps, and something comes about, whether it's at the state level or what have you, good or bad, then that line of credit is very flexible, we can do something. But we're not talking about the line of credit for operations, I want to make that clear, that's not at all what it's meant to be or will be for, it's not to be, you know, again, that approach, Ms. Chairman, so.
Cap.
That's the way to think about it. And again, I wasn't asking y'all to make a decision today or anything, it's just a matter of trying to educate and how we thinking about all this stuff.
What the deal is, this is how we was doing it today, it's like a workshop, and that's what we wanted to do, and talk about it so it's clear in everybody's mind what's going on. Anyone else got anything?
Ronnie, I have some comments about earlier parts of the presentation, I'm in favor of the line of credit, but I can save those till the end of the presentation.
I think it's a good plan. Yeah, I'll be at the end of it.
You want to do yours now at the end?
What I like, I think the line of credit is a good strategy. You know, when we think of capital, we think of huge ticket items, or big-ticket items that come around once every so often, you know, maybe once in a lifetime. But we also have capital needs that are annually. And speaking of which, seeing my fellow firefighters in the back, you know, fire trucks are considered a capital need.
That's right, yes, sir.
And I think, I would like to see if there's some way that we could utilize this line of credit to be able to set aside a portion to be able to cover an annual expense for these fire trucks and ambulances. I mean, you're talking about a million to three million dollars for a fire truck, depending on what you're getting, and ambulances, you know, three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred-thousand dollars. So I'd like to see if we could work out a strategy where maybe this line of credit could be utilized for that, or possibly if this line of credit frees up some other monies, because it's hard on a budget when you have to throw in a one-point-two or one-point-five million dollar fire truck.
And I think that's exactly what we're thinking about, is the idea that if we have a line of credit, depending upon how everything shakes out over the next month or a couple months, and the timing of, let's say, certain dollars, so again, that's the idea, it's the idea, if you think about it, your overall needs here are approximately fifty million. And we're thinking about doing this in, if you want to think it, stack it up, some pieces would be cash, some people a line of credit, that could be taken out with the bonds, or taken out with cash and bonds, or whatever, some pieces are grants. So yes, that's exactly why the line of credit is set up that way, to be flexible, but it really, again, let's face it, we don't know how the end of fiscal year twenty-four is going to end. We're going to have surplus, a little bit of deficit, a little bit of surplus, we just, you know, I'm saying, so all of this is why, as Ms. Whitlow said, the way we work with you, or hopefully continue, is we look at this like literally every six months, if not more, and we keep adjusting and amending within a year. And a line of credit for our purposes, I think we all concur as staff, that it's the most flexible thing in the mode right now that we're in. We can always, as I said to Mr. Mitchell, we can always get, you know, stop that line of credit earlier, but that's just to think about it that way, so.
Anyone else? All right, I give my two cents now, I feel the line of credit is an excellent idea, a good proposal, and not only for the fire apparatus, but for all, everything else, the fifty million that you're talking about, we've got lots of projects that we have started last year with the pay and the landfill, with all the other public safety equipment we've got, and I think it's a consensus of the board here, that I know there's a lot of groundwork that has to be done before it gets to any kind of a proposal for us to vote on, and I think it's a consensus of the board for staff with the advice of Davenport to move forward. So I think you've got a consensus on that, and I too have too, with fifteen years of dealing with you and Davenport, never seen any bad advice, it's always, I think it's because of the advice that you have given us and our other advisors, that we're at the point that we are today financially with our county. And so I think there is a consensus, Mr. Whitlow, unless you've got something to add at this point.
Sure.
To whatever's necessary to move forward to the point of where it comes back to the board.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, if I may, staffs, specifically Mr. Brian Carter, of course, worked with Mr. Rose and his team, you know, looking at, you know, what possibilities in the five years beyond against, again, those large generational projects that we talked about, depending what happens with the General Assembly. The CTE project is in the five-year CIP, it is listed in our five-year CIP, and will need to be, if that project moves forward, funded in one way or another, meaning whether that's through what may happen with the legislature and the General Assembly, as Mr. Rose said, or other construction grants. And so we actually have a school construction grant application for that project, if you all remember, in Richmond now, so we're anxiously awaiting that one, as well as for the middle school project. That being said, the five-year window also includes other significant county projects. When we talk about this line of credit, we're talking about not necessarily apparatus or ambulances, while that may can be funded, there's the nine-one-one center, there's the DSS facility, there's a host of other school capital projects now that the school system is also looking in, in their CIP with their aging buildings. So we're talking about, you know, significant multimillion-dollar projects, not necessarily at eight-hundred-thousand-dollar fire truck or ambulance. Now, that being said, that goes back to Mr. Rose's earlier analysis of our budget, and over the next five years in our CIP and the county's proposed budget, is for, to get a handle on the recurring annual replacement of an ambulance, or a fire truck, or a school bus, or HVACs, that's where the capital budget, and that's where county staff is recommending, again, the additional dollars, the additional revenue, to get our hands around that, because that is annual, what I would say, below one-million-dollar items. Those items in that seventeen million that you have before you are those larger items, like a nine-one-one center, a DSS facility, things of that nature. And so I just wanted to make that clarification, I know Mr. Brian Carter, I hope I didn't bomb that, but I'm looking at him and he's giving me the thumbs up, so.
Mr. Rose, thank you, sir.
I thank you, I think, Ms. Thompson, I think basically, given all of that, we have some more numbers, but I think I'm really done, I think, at this point. So I'm happy, again, Mr. Quinn, I welcome and answer any of your questions if I can.
Well, thank you very much. So just a couple of comments, I'm very supportive of increasing our capital budget, I think that we've kind of strangled the county over the years, and I look forward to addressing that need going forward. Secondly, if you could go back to slide eleven just for a second, I wanted to make a comment about that slide.
Yes.
So if you look at the second bullet, I understand that opinion, but I respectfully disagree with it. I really think that each year, we have a chance to first look at the county's needs, their budget, and that budget's likely to go up due to inflation and capital requirements, and I think each year, there's a chance for us to adjust the tax rate to meet the required revenues for the county. And so, and I think that we should encourage that point of view with the public, where there's not just this one-time bonanza that we take advantage of every four years, instead, we're thoughtfully constructing a budget every year, and then deciding what the tax rate will need to be when applied against the total assessments to hit that number. So it's just a comment about that. And then regarding the four cents, the four cents increase actually equates to a twelve percent increase for property taxes for people. And it's a little unusual this year, if you look at, if you put all the percent increases into a bell curve, you might expect the bell curve to be pretty narrow, that is, most people are right around the average, but it's not that way this year. It's almost, it's a It's almost, it's a very wide bell curve or almost two bells. There's a huge number of people that are out in that kind of, they'll be receiving 20% tax increases and another group that will receive hardly any tax increases. And so I think that we have to recognize that going forward this year, that the nature of how this tax increase will apply is very uneven for people depending on where they live. And then the last comment I wanted to make was, we received the school budget plan and realized that the capital budget for the schools is not complete. Just one example I've cited in the past with Snow Creek. We believe that there's a huge HVAC expenditure out there that's in the range of $2 to $5 million and that's not in the plan. And so I believe that you're overlooking the whole plan, not just the non-school part of the plan. And so I wasn't aware, I wasn't sure if you were aware of that, that missing capital plan or not, but I wanted to bring that to your attention. So those were my points.
Well, again, I appreciate that. As for, the way it typically works with any local government that I work with is I'm going to be given their best assessment that they know of at the time, meaning the staff, for us to evaluate. So I don't know particular projects per se, just like your colleague next to you, we were talking about CTE a moment ago. Again, in there, sometimes not in there for different reasons. But I think you could take some comfort in knowing that at some point, when we make a recommendation how to look at capital, we'll be certain that we've got everything properly factored in. You don't need to worry about that, I can assure you.
Thanks. Ms. Smith, you got any questions or comments other than ones you've already made?
Just a quick observation. Mr. Rose, would it be fair enough to say that your suggestions around or observations of the four cent tax rate over and above equalization, three cents of which is focused on capital, that that predicates the rest of your presentation with regard to how we structure our financing over the next five years?
Yeah, I would say so, again, and to your colleague to your right. Again, we know we look at it every year and you do look at it every year, but at the same time, it does. It really, I think, doing this sets you up for the next three to four years. Yes, I think it's what it really does. It gives me comfort that even if there's like a Snow Hill or whatever the place you said was, Snow?
Snow Creek.
Snow Creek, okay. Snow Hill's in North Connaught. But if, again, if we have those dollars, it really then allows us to have those recurring and that's going to be important. And that, I think so, that really sets us up for the next several years.
And another way I would probably say is it helps keep pressure off the operating general fund.
Yes, absolutely.
From a capital versus operating perspective.
Right, right. And again, and the last thing, again, I just, I point out, you know, you think about it, your staff, if we did not have some of those dollars sitting there in reserves and earning interest, you wouldn't be asking for four pennies. You'd probably be asking for six or seven pennies. You know, that's important for the citizens to understand, is that those pennies are generating real dollars that, and I've been here at some of y'all's presentations where, you know, the finance director, you know, Brian will present and show, these are what we're getting and it's going straight into the general fund. So it's real, not theoretical, as you know.
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Thank you.
Mr. Tatum, you good?
Answered your question.
Mr. Clark?
Just a quick comment to follow up on Supervisor Quinn's observation, the bell curve scenario. I'd just like for my colleagues on the board to be aware. My situation's a little different from yours because I'm also responsible for the town of Rocky Mount and right now their tax rate is 13 cents per hundred. And after doing a little canvassing of some of the town council members, they intend to keep their rate at 13 cents per hundred with this reassessment. Nine cents, I think, would be equalization. So for myself, I think there's three bells in the curve and I'm going to have to consider that pretty heavily moving forward with what I'm going to be able to vote for on this four cent tax increase. And I hope the general public and the citizens of the town of Rocky Mountain, and I'm just going to put it out there publicly, they need to start contacting some of these town council members and discussing this with them and maybe they can reduce their tax rate from that 13 cents. That's all I have. And thank you, Dave, again.
Mr. Mitchell?
David, do y'all have any projections on what you think the interest rates will do affecting our earnings on our saved money in the future?
So I am not an economist. If I was, I don't think it's worth very much. But what we're hearing, the only thing, I was in the papers this morning and yesterday, the Federal Reserve talked about doing three tax cuts. And that was, that was the latest. That's the, that the stock market is sort of taken off from that the last day or two. But we really, we don't really speculate on that. The only global comment I would make is that what we hear from the Federal Reserve is that they're inclined to move rates downward as opposed to moving upward where we were like a year ago. So hard to know. But again, we just want to be in a mode where we're resilient either way. We, meaning the county. We don't sit there and go, geez, I wish we had done something and we jumped too fast. I think that's part of this strategy here, is to not worry about, in some sense, what the Federal Reserve does, to be flexible. But again, even if I was economist, I mean, you know, everyone's got opinions, but all we can tell you is that's what at least the pronouncements are out there, is to try to get it moving down. And the thought is that it might move down starting around the summertime. That's what the latest was yesterday. And the one last thing I'd point out, though, is interesting, is when they start to have a sense of that, usually the real marketplace, banks and all, they tend to start to adjust ahead of time. They don't always wait for, you know, the actual dropping of the hammer. So we'll see what happens.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Jameson, you have anything, sir? I have one question. It's a little bit caveat off of what Mr. Quinn had here. When we visited Baco a couple of weeks ago, I talked with Ronald County, Robert, with the county administrator there. They have a staff of eight people now. And they do assessments yearly on a regular basis. And that was eight people. And they have to have office and then they have to have clerical support and all of this. And Mrs. Torrance is here, our Commissioner of Revenue, and I will ask her if she will come forward. And I would like to hear what you all have to say in regards to what the law says will have to do in what the county's doing with the, every four years versus two years, or having in-house staff doing it on a regular basis. Because some of the questions that we're getting and concerns that we are getting are, if my property comes down in two years, so I got to wait four years before the reassessment. What are you all's thoughts on what I just said? No, I like to hear, I like to hear from both of you. You alluded to it in just a couple of paragraphs in, in your statement about the assessments. And I know you deal with a lot of different counties. I have no clue how many, but I'm sure there are numerous. And what others are doing and the effects, if any, the advantages or disadvantages of changing or leaving the same. I'd like to, I'd like to hear what you got, the experts have to say about it.
I like your expert.
All right. Well, it's kind of a toss of the coin. If you do reassessments every two years, of course, you've got the million dollars or whatever it's going to take to run the reassessment, opposed to every four years. But you also get the benefit of the market going up and down. So, but you can also achieve that by adjusting your rates between the four years. Really, the assessed value is not where the taxes are derived from. It's the rate that you apply to that. So if the market goes down, then, you know, you can adjust your rates every two years, but you've got an extra expense there. But, I mean, if you want to do it more often, it costs you more money and you wouldn't see these sharp increases like between four years. But it could also work in reverse. And if the property values went down, then you've got to deal with it that way. But another way to do that is just to adjust the rates each year between the four years and pay for the one reassessment. And you could handle it that way too, because it's the rate you apply to the assessment, not the assessed value that drives this.
Mr. Rose?
Although I would say, although, one thing I would say, though, is, the question is then, what's the basis? If you don't do that and two years in or every year, what would be the basis? What would be the argument that you would have that says, we need to adjust the rate this way or that way? Because as Mr. Quinn said, it's right, there's no average. I mean, there's an average, but everyone's, you know, treated differently. And especially given this county is that special kind of county where you've got certain properties that, again, have had really big jumps, you know, by virtue of it, more so than even a lot of other counties. So there's no right or wrong, okay? And there's probably, no one is going to be very, very happy, not, everyone's not going to be very happy, whether it's every two years, four years, six, what have you. The only point that I would make is that when you think about it, it's sort of like a crap shoot. It's, if it's every four years, you have to hope that maybe the marketplace is in the right direction when you go out and get that outside, you know, independent appraiser. What happens if it's every four years? And just so happens that that fourth year, when they do it, is in the mode of, you know, a downturn. All of a sudden, let's say it's right at the pandemic and it happens and then maybe things look a lot worse and you're, are you stuck for four years? I just think it's not easy two years in, easier said than done, to have this board or some board really make a change without having some outside appraiser come and give a overall. It just makes it harder, I think.
I agree.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but the cost for reassessment, like this year we came out with 800,000. Well, and then moving forward, it's going to cost more. So if you do it more often, your expenses go up. You would keep up with the fluctuation in the market. But there again, from my perspective, I'm just the tax assessor. We put the values on it that really doesn't drive the revenues. It's the rate that you all have to put against it to get the money that you need to manage the county. So that could be changed yearly. And if you stuck with the four-year reassessment, it'd be less cost. If you go with the two-year, it's, it's more cost, but you've still got to adjust your rate up or down, even in that. So unless I'm missing something here.
Well, I think, I think the reason why the Commonwealth requires us, under that theory, then you would never need to have an outside appraiser. You just, like you said, you just know it does every year and why wouldn't you adjust the rate? But that's really not how it works. That's why.
No, the code of Virginia requires that the properties be brought into fair market value based on your population. So that's a requirement of the code regardless of how the counties manage their budgets. They're saying every, based on population, you can do it less than four years, but you have to have a reassessment at least every four years with our population. So that's just meeting the county, the state code to keep all properties at fair market value or at least market value.
And again, obviously, we all agree on that. If you felt like, this really, it's really, you're really the expert here for this county. If you feel like you could be in front of the board on an annual basis telling them what has changed relative to, let's say, the prior years, this year that we're doing the reassessment, then I think if we can then, if they can feel comfortable and you feel comfortable, then to be able to save, let's say, that will probably, like you said, about a million dollars every other year, then that would be good. You know, I mean, I'm no negative to that. It's just, the question is, does that give you, a lot of your colleagues, I think, get comforted by having, even if they don't love the results, get comforted by have a third-party reviewer, if you would, appraiser, so that it's not just stuck with you when you pull out the information and you say, well, this is why we're giving this advice. I think that's part of, it's really to help you, I think, is a lot of it.
Well, let me, let me, let me ask a question right here, because that brings up something else on my. Can this board change the rate without a reassessment?
Yes.
Yes? Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, that's what I was going to comment about. I think, you know, like Mr. Rose is saying, for this board to have to look to and the citizens expecting that we're going to manipulate the tax rate year in and year out.
That's dangerous.
Is a very dangerous precedent to set. I would not encourage us to do that. And it could bite us terribly, depending upon what the market's doing and not doing. So I think that, you know, I don't look, respectfully so, Ms. Torrance. I don't agree that the burden lies with us to set the tax rate to necessarily, you know, offset. Certainly, by code, that's the remedy. But for us to be told that, you know, you can lower the tax rate if you don't like what the valuations are doing.
Well, see, that's where we're missing the point. It's not the valuations. What you all are concerned with is the money it takes to run the county. And I'm taxed with coming up with market value. So it's a balancing act. And the state code actually puts stipulations in there, as you mentioned, that, you know, in order for the, just because the values are going up or down, if there's more than a 1% increase in the revenue from the prior year, that you have to have a public hearing, go through all that to let people know the neutralized rate. But, I mean, our job, the commissioner's jobs, is just strictly to establish market value based on sales. And my, my job stops at that point. Now, if you have reassessment every two years, yes, it's going to cost you more, but you are going up and down with the market. Now, someone at the public hearing comments the other day thought that because the value was up, that they were going to be penalized for the next four years with high taxes. Well, they misunderstand because it's not the value that drives their taxes. And that's what frustrates me a little, is because everybody thinks it's the value of the property, but that's not where the burden lies. It's on the rate that's applied to it. But then that's derived by what you all need to run the county.
But the value of the property is just market value. That's all it is. But that's where the bills come into play, market forces.
Well, yes, you put your rate against the value, but the rate comes from you all.
Well, yeah.
In deciding what you need to spend to run the county.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, no, you go ahead.
I was just going to add, if, if Mr. Rose would like to skip to his next slide, number 12 there.
That's where we're going.
And look at, look at who's at the very top of that real estate tax rate. And that is enough for me as to why we do not have an in-house assessment crew. I mean, their tax rates, you know, his chart only goes to 90 cents.
Well, I didn't think to ask Robert how much it costs, but I would think that eight appraisers and then the office space and then the clerical staff, that would be a whole lot more than the 800,000 that it cost us. And I don't, frankly, I don't have a clue how many it would take. I don't think it would take eight people, but it's going to take several to do that. And that's why I was asking, just as a comparison or clarification, because I'm certainly not interested at all in changing the procedures that we have right in place now. I was just opening it for, you all know what I was doing, all the questions that we've been getting and answering. And it was, it's a matter of record now and the clarification. And I thank you for your, both of y'all, for your expert opinions on that. Because I think it's, it's crucial for several things to know. I like, it is controlled by the code in what's going on.
I think where you are right now is perfectly fine. And in reality, your staff has such a good handle on the county's finances that while there may be a surprise here and there, and always is in terms of things. Always is. I think you are in good hands. I don't just say that. If you weren't, I wouldn't say it. Not every one of these folks are in good hands. And so I think, again, it is what it is. It's set up this way and I don't see for the moment a reason to change it. But just continue. But just continue, but it just makes it a little harder every four years to have these kinds of deliberations. It just does. I I get that, you know, it's just, it is what it is, but that's our sense of it. I think two, I think six years would be too long, though. I think eight years is way too long. But I think four is kind of a, you know, a sweet spot, maybe three years. But I say, it's it's basically one of the same. Thank you.
Does that open up anything else for, uh, Mr. Rose? Sir, as always, we appreciate your expert, and thank you for your expert opinion and for your advice. It's, I think it's that is where we're at today. I know it's your advice is where we're at today. And it behooves us to listen to our advisors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's take, let's take about a 10-minute break and then we'll come back and discuss public safety. Back, we're going to have to do, been asked, don't have to, but we've been asked to make a couple of changes. So with that being said, I'm going to make a couple of changes here. The first that we want to do is I'm going to ask, Mr. Whitlow, we've got the Farm Bureau here and it's not going to take but just a a little bit on them. And then it's in, that will be in regards to a question that we asked the last time we were here for clarification about the contract.
Sure.
And we need to work out some particulars with that. So with that being said, Mr. Whitlow, if you'll.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If you all recall, previous work session, previous month, Mr. Meyerhofer, consultant on Poultry Enterprise, was with the board and gave an overview of a proposal that the Farm Bureau, the local Farm Bureau, has put before the board. And I think the board attentively took all that information in at the last work session, good, robust discussion. And then, of course, additional information was requested, more specifics on 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 a project scope of more specifics, deliverables, if you will, bullet points as to the funding request. And you have that, we've sent that out in a weekly communication, I guess, a week or so ago, a couple of weeks ago, and then you have it before you today. But I did apologize earlier to Mr. Armstrong for not giving him advance notice further earlier in the week that we would be having this back to bring back before the board today. And it's really, I guess, at this point, the board's pleasure what they may wish to do. I will add that typically, when we do work with consultants and so forth, that typically we will put a contract together of more specifics with actual project cost on the deliverables. And typically, that's a reimbursable invoicing type itemized, if you will, list of cost. But it it certainly, for further discussion with the board, and not to put Mr. Armstrong on the spot, I know he's here with us today, and may can answer some questions that I could not answer, but you do have that additional information in 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 front of you.
Is there, you've got the proposal there in front of you. Is there any questions for staff or for Mr. Armstrong?
Chris, I I would just add that at the last meeting, they, or the last presentation they made, we didn't have the scope for phase three and four, and we asked that. And I've thought, I think they've done an awesome job of putting that together so you can really understand what they want to spend their money for.
And what else? The only thing that I would like to see is the the requested budget of 75,000. I would like to have an invoice, which is in the in the paper here, of what that's for prior to the money money being handed over to the Farm Bureau. That's just for accounting purposes, up to the 75,000. I'd like to see that in the in the paperwork. How about, does that change anything for the rest of the board? I think everybody's in in agreement with that, that you just don't hand over the 75,000.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if if that is the consensus pleasure of the board, we can.
Seems to be everybody shaking their head.
We can work with maybe providing that framework with, to the Farm Bureau, what that may look like in terms of itemizing and invoicing with specific cost and reimbursable basis. We can work with the county attorney's office as we typically would on any, you know, contract and so forth with a consultant. I guess the next question, then, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, would be, I know Mr. Carter's here, and we had some discussion, I think, last month regarding where exactly this these funds may come from, whether it's from one of the reserve, the reserve accounts or maybe the account, the Board of Supervisors contingency account. And so depending on the timing of invoices, that may span over two fiscal years, the remainder of this fiscal year and next fiscal year. And we do have contingency balance in the board's contingency. I would first suggest that line item, and then I'm looking at our finance CFO, Mr. Brian Carter, in in terms of any other areas that we may would suggest, if it's the pleasure for the board to move forward.
Mr. Carter, your thoughts on that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have two balances. As Mr. Whitlow said, if we cross fiscal years, however, the board can always approve carryover from a prior year budget into a new year, assuming we have a surplus. Right now, I think with the 75,000 price tag, there's 45,000 left in this fiscal year in the board's contingency. And I think what we can do is take the other 30 out of the fuel reserve. We're we're over halfway through the fiscal year. It doesn't look like we'll need that money for what we set aside. So I think that'll get the 75,000 in this year's budget. And if the the project's not done, I think probably what we would recommend is just a carryover request to the board for the remaining funds to cover it in the next fiscal year.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
We we don't need to take action today, do we, other than the consensus that to move forward? Or would you want to do a vote today to go for it with the contract? We don't have all the particulars.
Um, I I think we certainly can have consensus, you know, on on developing a contract, but if the board is at a point to move forward with the project to approve and appropriate funds with the understanding that a contract, all the ins and outs that we just discussed, Mr. Chairman, I, that can be done today, if that, whatever the board's pleasure may be.
We've kicked this can down the road a whole lot. I think that it's up to the board. I'm I'm ready to go forward to take a vote to either deny or accept this with the proper paperwork in place. Carter, you got something to add?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For myself, I'm in strong support of this. It's been a lot of discussion about it on my ag board, and I I would like to see the board move forward with it today.
All right, with that being said, I will entertain a motion that to include the moving forward today with the proper contract and everything in place as we talked about. Your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we go forward with this budget expenditure of 75,000 and complete a contract with Farm Bureau on this project.
Up to 75?
Two 75,000.
With an itemized?
With an itemized invoice to be presented prior to the expenditure of the money.
A second.
About a second. Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call vote on that since involved money?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
The project moves forward, unanimous vote. Thank you all.
We'd like to express our appreciation.
You're welcome. You're welcome. All right, now, prior to moving forward, I'm going to ask Mr. Carter if he's going to, if he'll come forward. He has a handout to give to every everyone, and this may put some light on David Rose's presentation that he made while he go. And so, Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of what I think will be helpful handouts and a couple of comments for Mr. for Mr. Rose's presentation. Some questions addressing other things for the for the board previously. And so what I'd like to do is first, kind of note on the, a couple of capital CIP questions that Mr. Rose addressed or that the board asked. So I want to be be sure on the planning of our capital. The CTE facility is on our proposed CIP, as Mr. Whitlow noted, at 72 million dollars. And as was noted, there are additional costs, and we have discussed that as staff with Davenport, for planning purposes, knowing that at the current proposal, there's another 20 million dollars worth of capital needs for our school system over five years off what we have seen to this point. And so when you look at debt capacity and borrowing capacity, I'm rounding up to 100 million, up of the 17 million that the county put on there for our projects, as Mr. Whitlow noted. Certainly, as we move forward, there is a pause, waiting to see what happens on the general assembly with the 1% sales tax for school capital projects. That can certainly alleviate a lot of that burden. But as we're looking at our planning from a staff perspective, what we're looking at is how do we build capacity in to fund the other items that are not these big items? So if we need to borrow that money for these big projects, we have it available and recurring at the time that debt service is needed. But I did want to address, we talked a little bit about the cash funding. And so on the the five-year CIP in your proposed book, it's a tiered, measured approach. The top section, on page 68 of your proposed budget book, starts this five-year balanced CIP. And I want to draw your attention to more detail of what Mr. Rose was mentioning, which is that 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 cash balance and how we phase it in. So I think the ultimate point of what we're proposing as staff is that over this five-year window, we wean ourselves off of the use of one-time money for recurring capital, which would be your big-ticket items like landfill equipment, fire apparatus, ambulances. So at the top, the revenue section, there's a line that says transfer from general fund. And you can see that incrementally increases over the the period of the, over the period of the five-year window. One of the things that that you'll notice on that is, at the end of that, if you'll notice, what I really want to draw your attention to is the other line that says other carryover funds. That's one-time money. So that's unassigned fund balance, whatever we want to call it. If you notice, by the end of year five, we only need 20,362. So what this five-year plan does is essentially eliminate and build in over a phased five-year period, fixing our capital structural imbalance. So I want to point that out in that the reason for the heavy increase in tax, our tax transfer, or excuse me, our capital transfer, and as they said, you know, essentially, three of those four proposed real estate pennies are for capital needs. County and school are included in that, and Mr. Rose mentioned that. The reason for that is it gets us to there over five years. If we incrementally put it in, it just kicks the can down the road, and it's going to probably take six, seven, eight, 10 years. And so for the purpose of that, it does not structure, fix our structural imbalance in capital in year one. It it does by year five. And so wanted to to point out that clarification to the board of why the the CIP was proposed with that cash transfer. But I do have a couple of other things. We mentioned on the the line of credit, Mr. Rose mentioned that. I would, it, the last time we did line of credit, we typically permanently financed that for 20 years. So what I don't think, and I wanted to make sure we were clear of the intent, and I think we got there with the big projects that Mr. Whitlow noted, we don't want to add a firetruck every year. You don't want to finance a firetruck for 20 years and an ambulance for 20 years. And so how we structure that line of credit is going to be important, hence the reason for the cash piece. The line of credit really is for these big projects, and it allows that flexibility for us to fund that as we needed and align those with maybe school capital projects and then permanently finance that at one time is the issue or is the plan for that that line of credit. And we did that in 2019 for for several items and then permanently financed that here with the the latest, the latest financing that we just did. So on the capital piece, and I do have some handouts, so if the board's okay with that, I'm going to ask staff to hand these out to you. And then I want to go over a couple of items I think will be helpful to address previous board comments on prior work sessions. So one of them is going to be a hard copy of what was emailed to you of the reassessment analysis. I won't belabor that point. But if you have questions on that, please reach out to staff of what that comparison looks like between 2023 and 2024. But this is a hard copy, depending on if you checked your email or how easy it is for you to print something. I wanted you to have something to be able to take with you. So that's coming around. The other item coming around is the the impact of what would be four pennies on the real estate rate. And so working with Ms. Torrance's office, the the average home value is about 284,000 based on on the data. So when we look at four pennies on that, that equates to $9.47 a month in additional tax on average from what a fully equalized rate would be. So I wanted to to put that in perspective of what that looks like for our citizens as well as what, of course, we as staff were trying to consider when we were looking at our rates. But the biggest thing is this color-coded handout that you'll have here. I really wanted to go through a couple of items on this because we do, we do recognize that this is, there are increases in this budget. We recognize that. There are a couple of things, though, that I think are misleading in saying that we have significant double-digit increases on certain things, and it looks like we're spending a lot of new money. I want to clarify why we have certain increases, what that money's really going for. And so on this page, what we have broken out for you is the the budget by category. We didn't break it out by line item, but there's budget by category. And then there is the increase or the total budget, but then what the proposed increase is. In order to fit it on one page, this isn't everything, but so it's legible for you. So for example, under general government and administration, you see an increase in compensation of 613,712. That is a true-up of prior year. I want to be clear, we're not adding salaries. So in this current fiscal year, the board approved a 7% cost of living increase. And if you remember, health insurance premiums increased 28% for for this adopted budget. That's a true-up. So that is not additional money. That is us just funding what we approved this year. And so the way, if you remember, we budget for that, we budget for that in a personnel reserve, and the reason for that is we have no ability to get it into the line items because usually we're adopting about the same time we're making amendments to the budget. So when it, and we, so we put that explanation out to the side for you. I don't want anyone to be confused that salaries are going up by what we're proposing. What also is included in some of those, and you'll see the description for the categories it is, is any of the 10 proposed new positions that we we proposed in the budget. That will be in some of those items. And under your descriptions to the right, you will see those and the cost of those. So hopefully, that'll help break it down a little bit, because sometimes that line item budget gets very confusing when you're trying to look at it. And then the rest of the operating is in there, and there's a justification or description on what's in the other operating increases. But I really want to, if you will flip to the, I guess, the second page that has the the little calculation at the bottom.
Brian, before before you move to that, under total judicial administration.
Yes.
That's 17% increase. Does that include the costs for the Roanoke Regional Jail that we share? Do you, in in that? Or have you estimated that? I'm just curious.
That, the juvenile detention center is included in that. The Western Virginia Regional Jail would be under public safety category. Yes, sir. There was a significant increase planned in both of those based on what we know of budget estimates at this point. But that would include the juvenile detention center, Mr. Carter. The regional jail would be part of that public safety number. Yes, sir. All right. So on the second page, what I wanted to to point out is, so the overall general fund budget, it looks to increase as proposed at 11.66%. And so I wanted to to adjust for a couple of things, because it is a little bit inflated this year because of the unknowns of the school system. So we have one-time money of 2.45 million in there. We also set aside money for a 3% cost of living increase. Not sure what the state would do at the time we proposed the budget. They have since proposed at the state level a 3%, waiting on the governor's action. So, and the increase to our county capital transfer that we've asked for, for exactly what Mr. Rose just delineated for you. So if you back out those kind of what I will call anomalies or atypical items, and you really get down to what is being requested and proposed in this. really get down to what is being requested and proposed in this budget, outside of those large-ticket items that are really not, they are really outside of the norm, they are new spending. That's not maintaining our existing. The actual general fund increase is not 11.66%, it is 4.13%. And just so you're aware, the 2023 inflation was 4.1%. So we are barely meeting inflation with the budget request. And just for comparison, last year, the 2023 budget, general fund budget, increased 6.93%. The 2022 inflation rate was 8%. So what I want to make sure that, you know, we and the general public is aware of is, our budget of the last two years has increased less than inflation in the general fund. Now, this is just CPI. This is not capital, which is why staff prioritized in what was proposed to try and address capital, because as Mr. Rose said, capital has doubled and tripled, depending on the type of equipment. So we're just trying to get ahead of it before it catches us behind. But I wanted, as the board's looking at the budget, to break that down a little bit for you, so that you don't feel like that we're, this budget is out of the norm. This is really in line with inflation when you break out some of those big one-time items. And really, if we remove the school system, and even the capital increases, this probably is a more normal budget increase for us, if we look over the last few years. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I thought this might be a good handout summary for the board, before we get into any of the other detailed department discussions, because what you're going to hear from some of the departments, of course, are going to be severe capital needs, probably some capacity needs. And those new positions, or those capital items, are the reason why we're looking at the four pennies on the real estate rate, in order to try and catch that. Because as Mr. Rose said, you really have this, you reassess every four years. You can adjust at any time in between there, which will require a public hearing and will require you to do that. But the longer you wait, especially on capital, all it does is make it more difficult to catch up. And so what we're looking at is something that would plan for it over that five-year window, and hopefully plan for things we know are coming, like the full cost of SROs in three years. So I hope that was helpful. I just wanted, Mr. Chairman, a couple of updates on that, on a more global perspective, and some clarification before the department. So thank you.
Does the board have questions?
Yes, sir.
Brian, under total parks, recreation, and cultural, what is, over here in the justification, move Faram College tuition from CIP to operating?
So if you remember, last year, we started a Faram College tuition fund of $50,000. We used one-time money for that. And so we fund every year $100,000 to Virginia Western for their CCAP program. And so Dr. Martin came to the board, asked for a presentation, wanted some support from this board for Faram College. And so we weren't able to fund that in recurring money at the time, we did one time. What this does is move it to recurring money, should the Faram College want to take advantage of that. Now, I think, from staff's perspective, Virginia Western has a very defined CCAP program, so what we would need is a defined tuition assistance program from Faram College. But essentially, what that does is move it to operating, and our recurring capital, I mean, recurring operating contribution to match what the county does for Virginia Western's CCAP program. That's what that means, Mr. Mitchell.
And to clarify, the money set aside for Faram College is designated for Franklin County residents only.
Correct. And that would be similar to what Virginia Western's program would do as well. That was the intent, Mr. Tatum, of aligning those both. Yes, sir.
Anyone else have any questions for, Mr. Carter?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Before we move forward, I want to make a statement on behalf of county staff. I really think they did an excellent job, Chris and his staff, with presenting a budget. It's pretty time-intensive, and I know it was a lot of hours, and I actually come by here after 5:00, and still saw lights on out here, 7, 8, 9:00 at night. I hope that this, what we're getting ready to do does not come down to a matter of micromanaging staff, but I hope it comes down as points of clarification for questions you might have in the budget. I'm sure that there are some that's got some questions for clarification. I'm sure that there are some that's probably not got any comments to make at all. So with that being said, we will go right into public safety. That was one of the places that was asked. Mr. Sandy, since the retirement of our, of Mr. Ferguson, the director, Mr. Sandy is coming forward. He's going to be the presenter. And between Mr. Sandy and staff, Mr. Whitlow, Mr. Carter, we're hoping that the questions or clarifications can be answered. Mr. Sandy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a couple of the public safety folks behind me here to kind of help and lend a hand, if there's questions that I can't answer. But I do not have a formal presentation, so I can go through some of the additional items in the budget, or we can just go right into questions that any of the board members may have about public safety items.
I think we'll just open it up to the board members that wanted to talk to you about any matters of clarification. Who's got questions? Who wants to go first?
Mr. Sandy. Appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
On the new positions added, the three public paramedic firefighters, that's part of that grant I think we just put in for, for the safer grant, to cover the salary?
Well, likely, that grant, we're not going to know about that grant till probably next year. So that would be looking forward a couple of years. I'm going to talk to you later about a grant that we got from FEMA that took three years to get. So that one is not going to be covered in this budget. So this budget is requesting three additional EMS positions, which equates to really one per shift, to kind of back up and provide some redundancy to the staff that we have now. So it's not looking to add any additional stations, any additional trucks. It's really to help us cover those times. I think we've discussed a few times where, in any given day, if we have people call out sick, or on vacation, or in training, we don't have sufficient backup to cover all the trucks. And so this is an effort to continue to kind of bolster that, to make sure that if we do have more than two people out, that we have the ability to keep all of our trucks on the road in a given day, or at least be in a much better position to do that. So the grant that you're referring to, we did apply two years, I think it was two years ago. We were not successful. We went ahead and tried again, or will be submitting an application again, but that one is going to probably take 18 months to two years before we get any kind of award for that. So that would be just looking forward as if, in a future budget year, we needed to add some more positions that would maybe give us an opportunity to do that through some of that funding. And just to be clear on that, that funding is three years of funding, and then after that, the county would have to pick that up, if we're successful in getting that funding. So does that help answer that? It's kind of two different, they're related, but it's kind of two different things.
Yes, it does. I would lean toward pulling that out of the budget and waiting to see if we do get the grants. When we do, fill those positions to that point. My thoughts. Some of that money, if we do go that route, I would like to see it come back to the individual squads or units, fire units, some, help fund some of their requests, please. No, good.
Mitchell?
Hi, Steve. I'd like to go back to what we were talking about earlier. Now, I was glad that Brian and some of them touched on, you know, the line of credit deal. And I mentioned it, Dave, that is not, that is not the golden ticket to, in my opinion, the golden ticket to purchasing some of these things. You wind up paying interest on something that should have been paid in three years, and you wind up on a 20-year term, and you wind up with a fortune in interest. But Steve, the one problem I had, and it was a couple of months back, when, and actually, I had a volunteer from Fork Mountain reach out to me about the ambulances that we had in the county that were down, three motors out of them. I'm all for putting motors in an ambulance that still has a lot of life in it, and it troubles me that we had three sitting around, when I know that public safety has multiple vehicles that I've never heard of a motor problem with, but we have three critical pieces of equipment down at one time. And I guess it's been sitting there for a long time, because when they reached out to me, they, you know, does this budget address that problem?
As far as ongoing maintenance, so I guess, well, I'll answer the one question. I think the approved engine replacements for three units, I think they've all been completed, at least two of them. All three, all three of those have been completed, and I assume they're back at least on the road as a reserve status for those vehicles. So that previous approval that the board made several months ago, those three engines have been replaced, and so those units are back in the system functional. I will say, and Andy may have to help me with this, but there was, I think we were in a period there where some of that maintenance on some of those vehicles was not being kept up the way that it could have been, or should have been. I know that Pat Meeks, in the few months before he retired, had picked that up, and was following up on a lot of those maintenance issues with vehicles, and a lot of that has been resolved. I think there's one or two, there's still maybe a warranty issue or something on one of those units. And so I think, as of now, I think we're much better on those number of vehicles that are functioning and on the road. So I don't know if that's exactly where your question was going, but I-
I guess, just going forward, that, because I remember when it came to us, we had to appropriate monies, and I can't remember exactly what it was, but I believe it tied back to that solar farm on 40, generated some extra revenues to pull that money.
So, yes. So what you did there is, we actually haven't received that money yet, but when that money does come in, you guys approved that to put it in a reserve account for future vehicle replacements.
Well, I guess, just going forward, it's, and I'm with Chairman Thompson, I'm not here to micromanage anybody, but there's money spent elsewhere in public safety that could have been spent to put motors in those ambulances, and not have three down at one time, is my point. And I hope the monies in this new budget covers that, to where it won't be a problem again.
Yeah, and I think that money you were talking about from the solar, I think, came in after that 75,000 for those three engines. But yes, that's really a lot of what we're trying to build into the capital, I think, as you heard from Brian and Chris as well, is to have those funding mechanisms already built into the capital for when we have those issues, and we just, we need to get it replaced. We've got the money that we can go ahead and get that work done on those vehicles, and not have to come back, you know, to the board for those additional appropriations.
And so, and as Marshall was saying, the three positions, they're relief positions to cover vacations, sick days, and stuff such like that. They're not designated to a certain place.
Yeah, really what that equates to is one per shift, because we have three shifts. So be one additional person on each shift to provide that, we're saying redundancy, really, but, you know, you really need two people, most, to run an ambulance, you need two people. So if one person's out, you know, that puts one truck with only one driver, and then if two are out, it puts the whole truck down. And so what we're really trying to do is keep us from having that issue come up, because it comes up more often than we would like, and I think these, some of these guys in the back would attest to that. But it's really a function of, you know, we allow people to take vacation, obviously, and sick days, and so without having any backup there, that's where we struggle at times, to be able to fill all the trucks and keep them all going.
And will this new budget, will that cover the staff that covers Snow Creek during the daylight hours? I know in multiple meetings, we had the thing up showing us monies we had already spent before the budget was done, and those positions were always on there. Does this budget cover that?
If I'm following your question, I think that's part of the true-up that Brian was speaking to of those salaries. Yes. So if I'm following your question correctly.
Okay.
Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things I want to talk about. I typically go over the accounts payable every month, and I'm like Nick, I don't want to start nitpicking here, but I noticed the 201 through 229 accounts payable, the bill in there to Hall, which I assume was for propane, was $5,000. Davenport was $63,604, and I assume that's for diesel fuel. Foster Fuels was $11,622. That's a ton of money for fuel. I don't know if this is heating, or if this diesel fuel part of that's public safety, but I think moving forward, county staff should maybe put out an RFP with these fuel companies, and negotiate a set price once a year, or every six months, or something, to see if we can get that in hand a little bit.
And I think it, I think it may cover several different categories, but I think-
Yeah, it was in several departments.
Brandy might actually be able to touch on that a little bit when she gets up.
I did talk to Brandy a little bit about it, but just a heads up for the future, I think we need, the staff needs to rein that in, and see if we can get some control on these fuel expenses. When you're spending that kind of money, I would think there would be some competition on pricing moving forward.
Yeah, and I don't, again, I don't know if that was quarterly kind of fill-ups that were done there, or what the extra charges may have been.
I was going to say, when I do my presentation, I do have some information on gasoline and diesel purchasing, so you guys will be able to see the locations where we have the fuel delivered. General Properties handles mainly the courthouse, and then we obviously have public safety, landfill, and parks and rec. Speaking from a general properties perspective, every time we order fuel, which is roughly every two weeks, we do get three quotes. So we do have competition there. A lot of the other fuel orders are below the threshold for needing written quotes, so you will not see quotes on a lot of the public safety fuel deliveries, because they're under $2,500.
Right. Okay. Back to the discussion about these three positions, and I'll have to ask, Mr. Mitchell, what did Snow Creek raise money-wise for their quarter, their building down there, the community?
They've raised over 80,000. They've raised over 80,000. And I was going to speak with the chairman and Chris about getting that on our agenda for our next meeting.
Okay. Well, I wanted to address that, maybe with this new positions, if we eliminated one of those positions, we could apply that money to fix the staff quarters at Snow Creek. Just a thought. And I know for a fact, some of the volunteer departments have offered staff to offset shortfalls in public safety, to some backup staff for these drivers, and possibly we could utilize some of that moving forward. Just some comments, and that's about all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay. I appreciate you, those three positions being built in to build in some redundancy. There was a couple of times, especially during COVID, to where our staff, our paid staff and EMS, there were some times when we were down to one truck that was available for a call. And that's unacceptable. But it's also unavoidable at the current staffing numbers that we currently have. So we certainly, to be able to prevent these short-staff situations, we have to build in this redundancy to take those into consideration. Now, will all those people be utilized every single day at the same department? Probably not. You're probably looking at moving them around to wherever they're needed. And I'll say, often, during my law enforcement career with the sheriff's department, people, you say, you know, I wish I had a job where all I did was ride around all day. And I tell them, say, listen, when I'm riding around, and if you think I'm doing nothing, just flag me down, and I'll let you know what I've been doing. And if there's any downtime, when I'm not doing anything, life is good for everybody. It's when they're busy, somebody's having a real bad day, and it's not just the people on the squad. So we would, I would love to have all of our buildings full of staff, and I would love that they would, the only time they come out is if they need to go get lunch. But that means somebody is not needing emergency services. And our brothers back in the back with the fire companies, I would love it if all they ever did with their fire trucks is wash them and drive them in parades, and I'm sure they feel the same way. I know a bunch of them was out at the brush fire yesterday, and with that wind blowing and everything, it's nerve-wracking. But we need to build in the redundancy in these departments, so that we don't have these short-staffing situations, because it's not worth, you know, being short, having a truck down, and then we have someone, you know, we lose a life because of it. And, you know, none of us are immune, and all of us may- And, you know, none of us are immune and all of us may, we never know when we may have to dial nine-one-one. And when we dial nine-one-one, we certainly want to know a truck is going to get there as quickly as possible. And that doesn't mean if I need one at Faram, it's got to come from Westlake. And so I, I want to make sure that we do everything possible to make sure that doesn't happen. So I support building in some of those positions for the redundancy and we, and in the future, we probably need to look at some more. Especially if we open up any more responding agencies throughout the county. So I, I applaud you for putting that in there and I do support those three positions and if we get that grant next year, we might want to look at. At increased staffing and I also support Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Carter on, we need to help the people out in Snow Creek with that building because. We are, we're gonna be using, I mean, they're gonna build it where they can stay overnight and it's gonna be, our staff's gonna be down there. And we've used insurance money in the past and county money to help extend Fork Mountains building a couple of years ago and so. And we spent quite a bit of money in Glade Hill, as we all know, and I, I think that we can help the people out in Snow Creek. And I appreciate the job all of you do. Fellas in the back, gentlemen up front. Franklin County would not be the wonderful place it is without you. And we don't tell you often enough and I just want to take the opportunity to tell you that we appreciate the service you do. And Steve, I appreciate you and your staff for the service y'all do. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, I've got several questions, Mr. Sandy. To start off with the line item for vehicle repairs and maintenance, you know, there's a net positive.
In the operating?
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
What, what page are you on?
I am on, um, let's see, I've got this handout, so I'll have to cross-reference it over to the, to the book.
I believe what you're referring to, Ms. Smith, is on page thirty-five of the proposed budget book.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, cool. Okay. Gosh, okay, so much. Alright, so down on vehicle repairs and maintenance, it's actually the fifty-three double zero four line item. Where there is an increase of a hundred and five thousand dollars. I know that when we had our public safety work sessions over the last year, year and a half. We had talked about the fact that the county, at least in my opinion, I recall. Is that the maintenance on the apparatus, we needed to take that burden off of the volunteer stations. Because we're buying the apparatus, therefore, in my opinion, we need to maintain them. So can you first of all tell me if we are doing that at a hundred percent? Are we, are we taking care of the maintenance on the apparatus for the volunteer stations?
A hundred percent, no.
Why is it not a hundred percent?
So we added, we did add money last year, as you stated, and so what the, the Volunteer Association tried. Voted to do was split that up accordingly between all the stations. I think it was around six, six thousand dollars per station, additional maintenance money that each one got. And so that's how they decided to, to divvy out that money to spend for additional maintenance. So. We have honored that and they've, they've submitted reimbursement requests and so forth for those six thousand dollars per station. And then, but above that, no, we haven't funded any additional maintenance requests above that. So. What you see here, and I think, just to clarify, I think it's actually a sixty thousand dollar increase. Over what was adopted last year. If, I just want to.
Well, the, what was requested was a hundred and eighty, which would be the sixty thousand dollar increase, but actually what was proposed was two-twenty-five, which is a hundred and five thousand. And the reason for that proposal is to address a lot of those, so, so we, the staff actually are proposing more than was requested. By public safety in order to address some of those additional maintenance needs in this budget.
And if we're not, you know, I understand the need to maybe phase in getting to that hundred percent mark. But we need to aspire to do that and if that hundred and five thousand is part of that discussion, is that what you're saying, Mr. Carter?
Yes, ma'am, that hundred and five is part of that discussion.
And how far will that get us to that hundred percent mark?
Well, that's kind of the million dollar question and, and something conversations we've had with the Volunteer Association about. Really trying to identify what some of those maintenance costs are and, and those ongoing maintenance and being able to track those maintenance costs. And then it also varies between department, obviously, because there's, there's different vehicles and then. What we're also looking at is not only tires and oil changes and things like that, but also hose testing and ladder testing. And some of these other maintenance kind of things that some departments have and others don't and so. What we're trying to work through with the Volunteer Association is, is to identify all those different maintenance needs that they have across the board. And continue to try to get closer to, to being able to help fund all of those different maintenance requests and so. In our previous meeting with the association, we talked about that we were looking at doubling, you know, the amount they got last year and, and. They were very appreciative of that, if, if the board was able to do that and so, in fact, we're even doing more than, than doubling what was allocated last year, so. We're still continuing to get there, but I think we're making those, those positive strides to be able to fund additional needs that they have. And recognize those needs, like you said, is, you know, those are needs for apparatus that belongs to the county and we want to make sure it's, you know, it's functioning properly.
And so where are you capturing, and, and I'm interested in knowing about the equipment requests from each of the stations? Where is that captured in here in the budget? Funding.
So there's a, there's a couple of different things. One is in the, in the capital, what we've attempted to do. Is start a process of putting funding aside for fire EMS equipment to help us with things like turnout gear, for an example. We know that turnout gear has a lifespan and so what we're really looking to do is, is, is put funding in there each year. To allow us to have a continual replacement plan. So we wouldn't. Just as an example, we wouldn't go to, let's just say Scruggs and say, Scruggs, this year we're replacing all of your turnout gear. We're, we're looking at more of a systematic approach where they may have twenty pieces of gear that need to be replaced and not forty. And, and so in that year, we'll, we'll work to replace the gear that's needed to be replaced that year. At that station, another station, another station. And so what we're trying to do is, is set up that, a program, if you will. To allow us to have that funding each year to be able to systematically replace gear as it's needed.
And does that move into things like air packs and hose?
It also includes those sort of things as well and so. We, again, to, to just create that structured capital plan, that, that's really what we're doing here, is trying to. Provide those funds through that mechanism so that as they're needed, we have those funds available and we can go ahead and replace. Again, it may be five sets here, it may be four sets here and twenty sets there, but we've got the, the ability to do that and potentially even having. A surplus of, of that gear available that can then be distributed to the agency as it's needed. And so what we're also working with the association on is, is trying to find a vendor that everyone agrees with. And so that turnout gear is, I'll just say, universal a, across all our agencies. That we're all working from the same equipment, so that equipment can be repurposed if needed, it can, we can get better price breaks if we're, if we're buying in volume for that. Particular piece of gear. So that's one of the, the task forces that we're looking to set up to help us identify. That and then identify the procurement mechanism for us to go ahead and get that gear. And be able to get that kind of on-demand, if you will, of, of each year.
Well, that's certainly good news.
And, and I'll just point out too, the other thing we're doing is through the AFG grant, which you guys approved last month, the application for. Part of that does also include some extrication tools, extractors, includes radios, things like that, that also benefit. You know, not only the public safety, but also the volunteer agencies as well. So we'll continue to go after grant programs like that to try to help.
Perfect.
To try to help with some of those needs as well.
The days, as we all know, the days of these individual stations being able to fundraise their way. To recurrent operating expenses is just in large part over. We have maybe one or two exceptions and so that just ups the ante for us to provide public services for our citizens.
Sure, and we recognize that and we're trying to, you know, again, trying to bring that into the, into the budget. Kind of on a gradual, you know, basis, but understanding those needs and, and trying to program it out really for, for that, you know, five, ten-year period. And you'll see that with the radio system as well. We're really trying to program that out, so as we replace radios. They're on a kind of an as-needed basis being replaced and it's not that five million dollars at one time that we have to replace every single, you know, radio in the system. So again, with both of those, trying to really have a systematic approach to how we do that replacement.
Okay, so moving on, with the allocations per station that we do historically. I'm seeing that there was a department request and a revised department request. But then the proposed budget is less. For each station and where it was twenty-seven thousand, thirty-eight dollars and the proposed budget comes in at twenty-six, two-fifty.
Right, so it's, it's, in essence, it's flat from what we funded last year?
I guess, and my point is, is I think that we need to have incremental increases every year. To our stations to at least cover inflationary pressures. They've got, I mean, anything that they're purchasing, they're under the same auspices of inflationary pressures that we are. And I, I don't like to see that number static from year to year, especially right now. So I just wanted to share my opinion on that.
Sure, and, and I think the way we looked at that was we would, we were trying to meet some of those other needs.
Understand.
And, and take some of that burden off of them and.
That's kind of what I thought, I mean, as we take other.
So that, that was kind of our, you know, judgment as far as, you know, we'll, we'll take some of that burden off when it comes to the. Equipment, when it comes to, you know, things like turnout gear and, and SBCAs and things like that and radios. We'll, we'll try to take more of that responsibility off.
Freeing up their money.
Exactly, that was the idea, was, was, you know, not penalizing them, but, but kind of helping in other areas.
I just want to stay attuned to the fact that those annual allocations, there may be some trade-offs granted. But I just wanted to make sure we're being attuned to what the needs are. And see, our stations are undergoing growth pressures as well as we are with infrastructure, you know, with growth in the county. You know, with every, every subdivision and apartment complex that gets built, there's more pressure on our EMS and fire services. So I want to make sure we're keeping that in mind when we look at these annual allocations. My next question is relative to Cool Branch.
Okay.
We've got the new Glade Hill Fire Station. There are two allocations in the budget totaling about twenty-five K for a Cool Branch. With the new station. Why in the world are we still needing to fund Cool Branch? If the new fire station was built with the intention of meeting responsive needs on that end of the county?
All I can say is we have not changed how we fund Cool Branch and any of the other external agencies.
Why not? This is public safety, this is not an external agency.
Well, I mean, external, they're external as they're not under the umbrella of public safety. So we fund Hardy, we, we fund the Smith Mountain Lake Boats, which is a Bedford agency. We fund Cool Branch and we've traditionally given them some funding because they provide that inter-jurisdictional coverage for us around the county boundaries.
But Steve, didn't the construction of the new Glade Hill Station take care of that now?
I don't know that I would say it took care of all of that.
Because there's no fire calls being run out of that building. Correct?
No fire calls being run out of.
There's no fire apparatus other than a brush truck and a pumper in that station. Is that why? That we are not, that we're still funding Cool Branch?
No, no, we're, we're funding Cool Branch because we traditionally have always been funding.
But we didn't have the new station.
Sure, that, I mean, that's something we can look at, but it's, it's something that we fund them because they provide that inter-jurisdictional coverage.
I understand.
Same as Hardy and other, other places.
But it wasn't necessary until, you know, we went through that whole discussion a couple of years ago. But I would like to formally request, if it's okay with the board, that we look at the response times with the new station in mind. To alleviate having to pay Cool Branch for services that we never paid for before. So if we can save twenty-five thousand dollars from paying Cool Branch for something that we've spent five point two million dollars on. And there's not a fire apparatus in there, we need to figure things out.
We, we've always funded Cool Branch. There may be some mistake about, we funded.
And always?
We, yeah, as an ex, and again, I'm using external agency as a.
I know.
As an out-of-county agency, maybe is a better term, that, that we fund several out-of-county agencies that provide assistance on the, the fire and EMS side. So we have not proposed to change that at all.
Well, I would like it, it looked at.
Okay.
I'd like it looked at within the parameters of having the new station and if that takes care of the responsiveness. That, 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 especially like down at Waters Edge, if, if having that new station properly run. If that could alleviate us needing Cool Branch's assistance.
Just my gut would be no, that we still need them for just a backup, because that station is actually right on the county line. But we can look at that a little further.
Doesn't the new station do that then? Okay, I'm, I'm just gonna let that rest.
Now, what we did do with, with Cool Branch a couple of years ago is we did do a, the, kind of a pilot project with them, more on the EMS side. Where we paid a one-time, was it one hundred thousand for a, was it three or four years? Three year, for a three-year period to help them fund paramedics. That would provide some of the additional paramedic coverage in the county. And so I think we're probably entering year three of that agreement as of now. So we have paid them that and we do get reports from them showing that they've been funding paramedics and they've been responding to calls and so forth. That's probably one thing we can look at as well, is do we need to continue that program?
Yeah, and so, you know, if I stand, and obviously I need, I stand corrected in terms of us having provided funding to, to Cool Branch in the past. Over and above since my tenure on the board and that discussion that occurred under my tenure represented to me a new thing. I don't know, that was my takeaway, better for worse.
But I would say the new thing was that hundred thousand that we did for the paramedic pilot program. I'm not exactly sure what we were calling it, but. That provided just extra paramedic level coverage in that area, particularly in the Waters Edge area and that part of, of the county.
Yeah, and I want to make sure that we've got proper coverage, that we've got optimal ISO coverage and so forth, but. All I'm putting into play here is the new station.
Sure.
And, and what positive impacts or adjustments are going to be necessary and could be available to us to consider as we move forward in terms of budgeting.
Sure.
Is that fair enough?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I think, let's see. I think that's it. Thank you, Mr. Sandy.
Sure.
Ms. Quinn?
I don't have any further questions or comments.
The only question or comment that I have is. It's in the equipment. I want to make sure that there's plenty of money in the equipment. For example, I got a call just last week. Burn Chimney has two new members and they need turnout gear. I don't know if there's any money left in the budget this year, but I just want to make sure that we've got enough money or, in our budget. To adequately take care of our new volunteers and our paid staff.
If they got, if they've got a battle to fight, be it in the, we, we, we keep talking about the fire and rescue, but also with the public safety. With sheriff and, and everything else. I want to make sure that our people are adequately supplied.
And.
And I, and I, and while ago, you pretty much answered that everything had been doubled and so hopefully.
We're trying, yeah, they, you know, I'm not, I don't want to say that we'll be able to cover every expense that every agency's gonna have, but I think what we've recognized and what we're trying to do.
There is a problem.
Is really, you know, begin to build that systematic approach up where we can help fund those, those kind of. Issues that each of those departments are experiencing.
Thank you, sir. Anything, everything, everybody clear conscience. Thank you, sir, good job, appreciate it. Thank you to public safety, career staff and volunteers for your services. Immeasurable and we appreciate it. Thank you. All right, Mr. Sandy, we just received in our Tuesday meeting from. Ms. Dowdy on our economic development, so. You're the one prepared to present here or answer any questions that may have come up from there. So if you will go to there for economic development, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Dowdy cannot be with us this afternoon and of course, I think she gave the board a, an. course, I think she gave the Board a, an overview, an update to economic development efforts on Tuesday. I think there were some questions regarding permanent staffing. I will tell you that's progressing along fairly nicely. We, we have some callback interviews going through that. We hope to make a decision in the next, hopefully the next 30, 60 days. That said, want to make sure that our new director has some time to get their feet, their legs under their feet or their feet under their legs, if you will, over the next year. We have made, I, I think it was mentioned during Tuesday's meeting, it was great questions regarding to Ms. Doughty, you know, her observation and, you know, she mentioned the need for administrative support. There's a clear need for administrative support in our economic development area. And so staff, and I think I've shared this previously with the Board, but now it will come to fruition, staff has reorganized whereby the Franklin Center and our workforce development efforts will fall and now under economic development. And so our Franklin Center staff has an administrative function and support. That organizationally will provide support to the economic development staff as we continue to grow and build that staff. And so we look forward to getting our director, getting our, all of our positions in the Economic Development Office fully staffed over the, the coming days, hopefully days, weeks. And then as we go forward next year, really to take a, a look, the Economic Development Strategic Plan, the information will be brought back to the Board for consideration, as Ms. Doughty noted, hopefully at your April meeting. And so to build upon that, we look forward to getting that strategic plan in place, getting the staff in place. But I can, I can answer any specific questions that the Board may have.
Has anyone got any specific questions for economic development? I was informed by one of the Board members to tell you to take your time, not to get in a big rush, that we had a rock star with Ms. Doughty and to take advantage of her expertise as long as we could. So I said it. Anybody else? Does that open up?
I do. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Whitlow, I, I think I've been pretty outspoken on economic development. This is where for, you know, one of the priority places that if we need to allocate money, it's important, and it's important from the perspective of resourcing that department properly. And it's, it's personnel certainly, but it's also things like marketing and, and the exorbitant, you know, costs that can be involved there. I would much rather this county grow its business base and take pressure off of potential tax increases in the future. And if we do economic development correctly and we resource that department appropriately, we've got a better chance of keeping pressure off the taxpayers. And having an economic development department with a budget of 1.2 million dollars, I think, I don't have it right here in front of me, yeah, is anemic. And what I'm hoping is that as we hire our new director, hope, you know, some fresh eyes, fresh perspectives, fresh viewpoints on his or her needs to grow that department for effective and meaningful results for the county. It's my hope as a supervisor that we'll be encouraging that and that when we come to our budget next year, that we can see some planning that's going to be resultant from the Economic Development Strategic Plan being adopted so that that's an actionable plan with appropriate and resource department.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Smith, and, and I, I agree with that. I think we have an excellent opportunity, a great framework ahead of us. We have that opportunity with the new director and, and staff, but then also alignment with our workforce efforts at the Franklin Center. Really excited about the opportunities there, as well as the, the strategic plan as we get that back to your very point, because as, as Ms. Doughty noted, you know, economic development's holistic. It's not just an industrial park. It is, is much larger than that. So we look forward to, to delving in, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? All right, thank you for that. Moving right along. Randy, it's your turn. Do you have a presentation or you want to go right into questions?
I have a very quick presentation.
Thank you. You have handouts?
I do not. Okay, like I said, I'm just gonna give you guys a very brief presentation that gives you an overview of operating budget, capital projects, and just some other topics that I've had some questions on recently. Operationally, you're really not going to see much of a change in my budget. We've been sitting at about 1.6 million dollars for General Properties for a while. We're seeing about a $95,000 increase in that. Twenty-five, or $20,000 of that is attributed to the street signs just being moved over from the sheriff's office. So we're seeing very minimal increases. There's, you'll see them a little bit in maintenance contracts, and mainly that's me trying to get preventative maintenance contracts in place. Some of your obvious ones with your utilities, janitorial supplies. And you'll see a little bit of an increase in motor vehicles as well. Obviously, that amount is not for the purchase of motor vehicles. This is purely just the maintenance. So that's General Properties trying to take in the maintenance of vehicles and create a more centralized place for that maintenance to be tracked and kept up to date. Not that you guys need a reminder, but I, I do want to point out as we continue to add new facilities, like two years ago with the addition of the animal shelter last year or earlier this year, really starting to take on the responsibility of Glade Hill Fire Station, we're gonna see these line items increase. So every single one of these is gonna go up as we continue to add facilities and our current facilities age. I just want to touch really quickly on some projects that we finished up in the last 12 to 18 months. We have the facilities master plan, which was the courthouse, the libraries, public safety, sheriff's office, and social services. Just again, it's a space needs analysis. It looks what we currently have, our staffing levels and the services that we're providing, and starts to look at that five and 10-year projection about what we're gonna need. We also did a facility condition assessment at the jail, and that evaluated all major mechanical systems, along with the interior and exterior, the facility and the site conditions. And those recommendations are broken down into three priority levels. And if we were to implement all of those recommendations, we're probably looking at about a little bit over $4 million in repairs and renovations to the jail facility. HVAC replacements, we were able to replace several units in the last year at the library and ESIG. So those have been much-needed repairs. We obviously still have a lot more that we need to do in the future. Security enhancements, that's gonna include the glass barrier that we installed for the Commissioner of the Revenues Office. Also, the door access system, we installed that at Glade Hill after the construction was finished up. Some small camera replacements, panic buttons, stuff like that. And finally, we finished up some upgrades to the canneries. So two seasons ago for them, we replaced both of the boilers at Glade Hill and Cowaway. So moving forward, we obviously have the relocation of public safety to the Franklin Center, the relocation of the EOC to the Government Center, those continued HVAC replacements that I brought up, elevator modernizations at the courthouse, interior and exterior repairs at the courthouse. We do have one courtroom that's experiencing some moisture issues, so we're gonna be doing an assessment on that. Also looking at the exterior of the facility, the stairs, the columns on the front, a little bit of restoration work, and a much-needed paint job really for the entire courthouse and the jail. We still do have some additional repairs and security enhancements that we would like to do at the jail, and those are gonna be, like I said, the priorities that came out of the facility condition assessment. We'll, we'll be doing additional upgrades to the canneries. And if you, if you look at the approved carryover from '22, '23, you guys did approve $100,000 for the canneries. So similar to what we did with the boilers, we're gonna submit an application to the AFID grant program, and we can apply for up to $50,000 with a dollar-for-dollar match. So really, we're, we're hoping we'll have $150,000 to go back into the canneries, and that's gonna be invested in equipment this time. And finally, roof and HVAC replacements at the YMCA. I wanted to save that one for last because it is a bit of exciting and really good news. In 2023, the county submitted an application or a request for congressional-directed spending, so basically your federal earmarked funding. We did find out recently that it looks like we will be getting a million dollars in funding for that facility. There's still some, some like hoops to jump through. It's kind of like a grant program. We'll have to apply to the program, but it's looked like the funding is there. So we'll be working with YMCA staff and my staff as well, looking at a complete roof replacement and HVAC. If there is funding remaining, we could look into some parking lot improvements as well. Digging into the HVAC a little bit because it is such a large thing, just to give you guys an idea, since we brought Glade Hill under General Properties, we're up to 111, 111 HVAC units that we maintain. So we keep an annual estimated replacement, like timeline and associated cost for those units. And we really are seeing the age of these units starting to become an issue. So very generally anticipated replacements, we're looking just over $200,000 immediately. I would say within the next 12 months, we need to go ahead and schedule to have these replaced. Some of the units haven't failed yet, but what we're coming to see on most of these projects, if one of them does fail, we're seeing up to a six-month lead time to get the equipment that we want. So if we'd like to keep the same type of equipment on the building because it's easier to maintain, we need to go ahead and schedule the replacement of some of these. Also, like when we replaced the units at ESIG, we did four of them at one time. And the reason why we did that is because the crane that it took to get the equipment on top of the building cost $11,000. So if we wanted to pay $11,000 every time we replaced one of the units, we'd be paying $44,000 in cranes, or we could pay $11,000 one time and knock out all the units at one time. So the next one to three years, we're looking at 362,000, and the next three to five years, 239. The five to 10 years, I will say it's, it's 1.5, but that's gonna be a very hard number to, to nail down, just given the way pricing is right now. And in the next 10 years, we don't have a, a cost associated with it, but we do have 26 units in that 10-plus years that will need to be replaced. So as of right now, we're looking at about 2.3 million in HVAC replacement cost. As far as, oops, that's just a roof replacement, sorry. Roof replacements, we are getting ready to start assessments of all of our major county facilities. We're having a third party come in, assess the roof conditions, give us a timeline for replacement and pricing. Once we have that for those facilities, we'll roll that into the CIP so that we'll have a much more accurate prediction of how much money we're gonna need each year to fund these projects. I won't read through the full list, but this is basically the list that was included in the request for the FY '25 to '34 CIP. You're gonna see a lot of the same projects that I've referred to, from jail repairs to HVAC, roof replacements, the new, or proposed E911 facility is a big one, a potential new Westlake Library facility. So a lot of those projects are big-ticket items, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have on those. A question I've been getting a lot lately has been about county leases. So I just wanted to give everybody an overview of the leases that we currently have or that I'm currently aware of. So the properties that we, that are actually leased by the county, Public Safety has the Rocky Mount spaces, obviously, and those are two. And then they have the Westlake spaces, which is two. The sheriff's office has a space out in Westlake for their substation, and then we have two spaces that the Westlake Library occupies. Kind of on the flip side of that, the county-owned properties that we leased outside agencies, we have two for Piedmont Community Services, obviously Social Services, the YMCA, STEP. We lease the Grand at 290, the ESIG Center, that's a small section of it that the YMCA leases, and then the pre-trial and probation space at the courthouse. In addition to just property leases, we have agricultural leases, tower ground space and water tank leases, and then waste collection sites. Kind of touching back on the fuel conversation we had earlier, this just kind of breaks down where we have gas and diesel delivered, and you can see that it's mainly divided up between what I'll call the county, which is General Properties ordering the fuel that's delivered to the courthouse. That's where most of our just general fleet fills up. Public Safety, you'll see the locations where they have gas and diesel delivered. And then Parks and Recreation has both delivered at the Recreation Park and Wade Park. So currently, like I said, General Properties solicits quotes each time we order fuel. And then there's other departments where it never reaches the threshold where they have to get the quotes. There are some options we can consider in the future. That would be set-price contracts, state contracts, cooperative procurement contracts. I know staff had talked earlier this week that Roanoke County had just put out a RFP for this, and there is a clause in there that would allow us to purchase fuel off their contract. So we may not even have to put out an RFP if we could use like a rider clause on another localities. And we can also look into the potential use of a fuel card system that would allow staff to fill up basically at any gas station in the county, just with a card instead of having to come to the courthouse. And that's all I got. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, who's got any questions? Start over here, Tim. Smith?
Just a quick question, Randy. By the way, excellent job that you're doing with, with General Properties.
Thank you.
It is refreshing and I, I, we just have such great confidence in you and we appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. On the canneries, are there any discussions with the schools as it relates to partnering in the funding of the canneries with these capital numbers that we're looking at?
Um, I need, I know they have an annual budget for the canneries. Last time I spoke to, to Mark Law about that, they are using that. They're doing some asbestos removal. So they are actively doing improvements to the canneries outside of the equipment and the boilers that we were looking at. So the stuff that you guys, you guys have approved $200,000 now for them, and that's why we're going after the bigger items, the boilers. Some of the equipment for the canneries cost 20, $30,000 apiece. Like, it's not cheap. So, and it's very old. If any of you visit them lately, you understand that the equipment is well past its prime.
Okay, thank you, Randy.
You're very welcome.
Quinn, no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great job, Randy, and I'm really excited to hear about that money for the Y roof and the HVAC system. That's terrific. On your picture up there on the screen, the top right, the county courthouse, those Corinthian columns on the front at one time had a carness around the top and it was removed, and it, it's architecturally incorrect. I don't know if there's money to replace that, but I think I know where there is one of those in existence. Would that be something we could maybe talk about, putting those back up since you're working on redoing the courthouse?
I would think so. We're gonna have to do some restoration work because some of the material's chipping off of those columns, so it, it could be fairly simple to add that. But I, if you have pictures or if you actually, actually have a physical...
I actually can find one of the original ones. I think I know where there's one.
Okay.
And I also, as part of the discussion, the, and you can email this to us, I would like to know what the lease terms are down there at Westlake for the public safety, the sheriff's office, and the library, when those leases expire.
I can tell you now if you want.
Okay.
For public safety, their spaces in Rocky Mount expire on June 30th, 2025. Do you want lease amounts or do you just want...
No, just say that's fine.
Uh, Westlake spaces expire September 30th, 2027.
How much is that?
The Westlake spaces are $3,996 a month or $47,952 annually.
Thank you.
That's all of them?
That's the, that is just the two Westlake spaces for public safety. The sheriff's office Westlake spaces expire May 31st, 2024. That's $23,000 annually. The library at Westlake, it expires December 31st, 2025. That's $120,300 annually.
What was it, Dave?
December 31st, 2025.
Carter says.
I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Which one? You got anything?
Hey, Randy, thank you. I, I think you do a wonderful job managing this, and I'm, I'm also thrilled to hear about the YMCA. That's great news and I know it's desperately needed. I will piggyback off of Mike Carter right there. Those leases in Westlake are, we have to look at that. That is way too much. I understand we need public safety, the other ones we can look at, but that is too much to pay for leases for that. And I think we need to come together on that and, and come to a decision. That is, um, that's... And I think we need to come together on that and, and come to a decision. That is, um, that's exorbitant.
I would like the opportunity to try to renegotiate those rates.
It's, it's a, it's a big old room in between to renegotiate, but yeah, we need to. And, uh, need to be looking at them. So, this one, the Sheriff's Office was May thirty-first. That one's coming up. And what was the expiration on the two Public Safety?
In Westlake?
Yes.
September thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
September twenty twenty-seven. And what was the cost on those?
Um, the Westlake spaces combined was forty-seven thousand nine fifty-two, and the Sheriff's Office space was twenty-three thousand fifty-eight.
And the library?
Um, annually, one hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Jamison?
Thank you, Brandy.
You're very welcome.
You are doing a tough job. The one lease on the thing, it was, uh, Daily Grind, the coffee, how many square feet are we talking about there?
Um, I would have to, actually, I may have the lease. Actually, I don't have it listed. I'll have to get it for you.
Okay. It, it just seems that's, works out probably, what, uh, forty-four hundred annually, uh, three and some odd dollars a year. Don't, I mean, a month. That don't sound like a whole lot of rent. I mean, and there again, depending on the square footage, but it just jumped out at me. Would you look into that, please?
Uh, and you're referring to the, the Grand building, like the, the former Daily Grind?
Daily Grind, yeah.
Yeah. So, I had, I had that as eight hundred and twenty-five dollars monthly.
And the budget?
Um.
Forty-four hundred annually, right?
I'd have to, honestly, I'll have to pull that sheet. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Chris, is that right?
I'm sorry. Say again, Mr. Jamison, I was-
The annual rent on Daily Grind, uh, forty-four hundred dollars. Are we talking the same building here?
It's, um, yeah, yeah, that was the, the old Daily Grind, that, that coffee shop and so forth. We still, we still, it's, of course, it's not a coffee shop now. It's the Grand at two ninety. It's, um, negotiated a few years ago. The owners of the Grand at two ninety across the street utilizes that for event space. Upstairs of that building, Mr. Jamison, uh, the Department of Forestry has a couple of offices there. Um, and then we're still collecting rent from, um, the owners of the Grand at two ninety, but we can, we can get some more information for you on, on that lease specifically, but that, that's an approximate.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
The only thing that I have in regards to this is I would like to see, uh, as Mr. Carter brought out, the procurement on the gas and diesel.
Okay.
I'd like for all that, I think there's some money to be saved if it all came under your office, even these, uh, where they've been buying it for the Public Safety.
Uh, Public Safety does handle their own, but I think if we brought, like, it all under one umbrella, we probably may have enough quantity where we could save a little bit.
Save some money and have some, uh, uh, buying authority or power there or something to save some money.
The only thing we have to watch, if there's volunteer stations that have, um, not purchased their own tanks and they're owned by like a Davenport, they may be restricted that they can only use that company.
Okay. And then the only other thing that I have is these leases. I think the, uh, a whole lot of the utilization of the, uh, Burnt Jimmy School could solve a whole lot of our lease problems, and I will, I will continue to advocate for that.
Okay.
Thank you. I think you did a excellent job in your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment?
Well, hold on just a minute if we got something else.
I was just going to make a general comment, if I may.
Sure.
Um, with regard to the Westlake leases, um, there is no way that, um, I can sit here and defend, um, the cost of those leases. Um, I think we've got a minimal responsibility to make sure that the lease payments that we're paying are marketable rates. Um, you know, to make sure that the taxpayers are getting an appropriate deal for, I, now, I'm not a pro, a proponent of leased space to begin with. I like to own, I, I think leased space, and we've talked about that before. Um, however, the caveat, and I want this board to keep in mind, is that, um, when it comes to issues of the services that are in the Westlake corridor, the library, especially EMS, um, Sheriff's Office, I would have to do some more homework on. But the constituency that I have in my district, um, depends largely on having these services in the Westlake area. And I don't have an objection if we can locate and identify space that is appropriate and that, um, is cheaper for the county. I don't have an objection to that. What I do have an objection to is removing services from my constituencies. I get questioned all the time, why do we, you know, supplant sixty-three percent of the county's tax base, and we don't have very little, we have very little to show for it? I have to answer that all the time. And I do answer it, and I've got the answers to it, but if we start taking things away out of the Westlake area, number one, it's a designated growth area, and it's going to impair the DGA if we start doing that. And I would be adamantly against doing that, but can we find cheaper space? I'm all for that. But I want to maintain the integrity of the Westlake corridor and the DGA. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Brandy. I'm clerk, is, excuse, or the, the freshman. We'll take a, uh, let's see, that was everything for the budget. Now, we got, we got more to go through, but that was our-
I think that's everything, Mr.-
No, no, we got to do-
Other items?
We've got to do other items by you, other items by the supervisor. We got to deal with Mr. Sandy's couple of projects. We got to deal with that. Uh, thank you. I think we can, uh, no more than here. Let's go to, uh, B seventy-five and finish our meeting out there. We'll come back here. We've got the freshmen back here to take a break. We've been out here for a long. We can go to B seventy-five.
We're going to have our meeting back there?
We'll have to come back here to close out.
But we'd need to take our stuff with us.
No, no, you don't have to take your stuff. You, we'll come back.
Oh, just to eat? Okay.
Nick's not going to be here. Madam Clerk, he had to, uh, an engagement he had to go to. Okay, with that being said, uh, Mr. Sandy, are you ready? We need to take action on this, correct?
Yes, sir. Uh, that, would like you to take action. So, um, this is relating to the Hazard Mitigation Grant. Uh, I spoke to you guys about a couple of weeks ago, maybe it was the February meeting, how we were expecting this grant, uh, from FEMA, and it was going to be, uh, helping to fund some of our radio system improvements, and one of those aspects being the microwave, uh, components, which are kind of at a critical stage. Uh, we've, we've been waiting for this grant for three years, so we've kind of been, um, Jeff has been duct taping and, and keep, keeping it going for, for a while. So, he is, uh, ready, uh, chomping at the bit to, to get that aspect going. We, we did receive the, the grant agreement from, uh, the Virginia Department of Emergency Management earlier this week. Uh, we did have some, uh, questions for them relative to, uh, the amounts of the funding that were provided because the numbers were different than what we had verbally been told. Um, what we did find out, even during the meeting today, we did find out that, um, we've been approved for additional funding, but it's not part of this award right now. It'll be a supplemental award. And so, uh, what we would like to do tonight is go ahead and get you to approve the agreement for the initial award, just knowing that we will come back to you because once they appropriate that as additional funds to come to us, it's about four hundred thousand more dollars, uh, that, uh, will come back to you to, to kind of approve that second step or that amendment. And the real reason we, we can't really wait for them to get it all together is because of the microwave issue. Um, because the second part of this is we need the approval of the grant agreement, which the attorneys have already reviewed, and we also need approval of the contract to purchase the microwave equipment that's going on the towers. Uh, it's a sole source, sole source provider. Uh, again, um, our legal counsel has already reviewed that contract, and they're good with that. They've made all the changes to that contract, so what we're really looking for is approval, uh, of the grant agreement, and then also the approval of that contract, and I do have kind of a revised motion.
Now, a question, a question is, uh, is this a, is this a hundred percent contract, or is it a matching, matching?
This is a reimbursable contract.
Thank you.
Pass it.
So, yeah, I should have.
Should have said that. Yes, this is a reimbursable, so it's not covered a hundred percent. But we do have the capital funds already set aside for the microwave aspect for the contract that you're awarding. We have those funds in the capital account for radio already. Um, and, and the grant funding helps pay about, um, well, totally, it'll be about thirty-nine percent of the, the cost will be covered through the grant program.
Anybody got any questions for, uh, Mr. Sandy?
I got, I'm just wondering, why did you have to do a sole source with that provider?
Um, I may have to let Jeff do that. It's, I think it has to do with, well, I'll just let you answer that. You'd probably be better, better to answer that than me.
Yes, my pleasure. Um, Jeff Acton, I'm the Communications Manager. So, we are replacing a system called NEC, which was, uh, decommissioned from the Americas in two thousand and twenty-one, and then all support across, uh, the world was decommissioned December of two thousand and twenty-three. In order to reuse specific hardware that is mounted external from our shelters and on our towers, uh, therefore controlling costs, we have to go with a sole source vendor. Aviat purchased the interest in NEC back in two thousand and twenty-one and worked to acquire the intellectual property of NEC. So, in effect, Aviat purchased NEC and, uh, is now the new kind of vendor for their material. The caveat that's been really challenging for us is we've been unable to get any support for physical hardware or material in any of our towers. So, that's a, a bit of the background on the sole source.
We are also part of the regional system.
Yeah, and the regional system, just for background, we, uh, participate with Roanoke City and Roanoke County in our radio system. So, we're a one-third share of a larger radio system, which further controls our total costs in terms of both operating and capital expenses.
Now, y'all going to laugh at me, but this is what I was talking about earlier for the broadband, is, no offense, Jeff, a geek like this, because I don't have a clue what he just said. I don't have a clue. Now, the rest of y'all laughing at me.
That's why I said he, he can say it better to me.
Huh?
That's why I said he can say it better to me because he knows every aspect of it.
Now, now you get my point, don't you? Now, how many, how many else is willing to admit what I just admitted? There's one down, there's one down there.
And I will just say, Roanoke County upgraded to the same system as, as in, in Roanoke County for their aspects in Roanoke County a year or two ago. Um, so we're a little bit behind. We're trying to catch up, and, and so that's another reason we're using the same source that, that this Aviat.
I'm, I'm glad you're on board, buddy, hanging in there. Thank you.
Me too.
I bet. It's called job security, right?
Yeah.
He, and he's also, uh, more frugal than I am, so just so you know that, um, as we go through budget things, he's, he's wonderful in finding cost-effective ways to get things, to get problems solved, so.
Very good. Thank you, buddy.
All right.
And does that open up anything else? All right, I'm going to entertain a motion. You got it right in front of you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept Phase One of the FEMA Hazard, Hazard Mitigation Grant totaling three hundred forty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-eight cents in the federal and state funding, in federal and state funding, and authorizing the county administrator and county attorney to sign necessary grant agreement documents. I further approve, uh, a contract with Aviat Networks as a sole source provider in the amount of seven hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars to be paid from existing public safety capital account for the upgrade of nine-one-one radio system, microwave infrastructure, and authorize the county administrator and county attorney to execute the necessary contract documents.
Got a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call. Cost involves money.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
He's asking.
That's right, I forgot. Sorry. Um, Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Motion passed. And see, Jeff's going to be my appointee on the board. He's in the Boone District.
I second that.
You're going second. That's what I was talking. That's funny. I don't care who you are. That's funny. Okay, other matters by supervisors, let's go with, uh, Mr. Whitlow.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just a reminder of the, when we, um, recess, I guess, or from today's meeting, it will be till Monday at five PM. That's, again, the board will come back an hour early to discuss the RFP for the FERM Housing Project, and then, um, to be followed by the six PM public hearing for the FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Again, emphasis added, that is on the proposed budget. There will not be a vote taken on the proposed budget that evening. It's not necessarily a public hearing for the tax rates or the equalization, uh, or the effective tax rate, rather, uh, hearing, real estate, um, and tax levy hearings. That's for April the eighth. But, uh, just a reminder to the board, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, other matters by supervisors. Quinn? Smith?
None.
I'm good.
Mr. Carter?
I have a, maybe it's a budget issue. I can, we talk about that now?
Yes, sir.
And nobody's going to like me very much when I get done, but back on the health insurance that was, we voted on your last, uh, last meeting. And the county, it says, they propose to pick up the employee share, the increase. That sounds good. I mean, that, that's good. When I was in business, I did the same thing by employees, but it was my dollar. And I, I have heartburn. It's, it's not going to go over good. I can't see it, and I don't think it's right if a county puts a bill for the increase for the employees, and we got citizens out here facing the same increase on their insurance. That's my thoughts. Um, I'd like to rest of your thoughts on it.
Ma'am? Yes.
My comment on that, several years ago, it was some former supervisors on the board, and when we mentioned, uh, employee raises, some of them made a comment that farmers didn't get a raise, and my comment there is, well, the farmers don't work for Franklin County. And we have an obligation to look after our employees. It's the reason that I support, uh, covering the, uh, that increase. Uh, I know people out here are seeing the same increase, but those people don't work for us, and if they did, that we'd be taking care of their increase.
But we're using everybody's money. It's not our money.
But we're also the people, the employees that we're covering, we're also using their money as well. So, that, that's why I support covering the, the insurance increase.
I've got a comment to make, but I'll yield to anyone else. I don't disagree with what you're saying. I want you to tell you that upfront, but here's my take on it. We're at a time today that with unemployment like it is, our pool of workers out here, we've got to take from somebody else. Because that's where it's at. We've got the people that we've got in place, and I think it's imperative on this board. We could not provide the services that we provide to those citizens, those taxpayers, without our personnel. That's why I think it is important for the few dollars that it is that we pay our personnel good because of how we've got to get them and retain them. You know, we just lost, uh, I forgot the number, but it was right at a hundred and forty years of experience. That's hard to get back. You know, when, uh, Connie and all of these that retired, Billy and all of that. And I think that if we can just pay the few dollars there, that it is a big piece of money overall to our county citizens. That's how I look at it. That's why I'm saying I don't disagree with you saying, and maybe in different times, it, it may be that way. But with the pool of people that we've got today, I mean, you can talk to Mr. Whitlow and these, where they're hiring these people. It's difficult.
I understand. Uh, like I said, we running the same problem hiring people, and you want to retain them. I understand.
Yes, sir.
But I still think it's a hard sell to the public, especially with the economic times we're in.
Anyone else? Is that, is that what we just said? Does that change?
I would just say, in my business experience, it was exactly the same as yours, Mark, but there's always a split. Not fifty-fifty and, and not the same every time, but there was always some kind of contribution from the employee.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'll just add, and piggyback on you and Tim, um, since I've been on the board, Marshall, um, especially post-COVID, uh, we've been in an environment as a public entity that now we're competing with the private sector more than we ever have, and when you talk to our department heads and the difficulty that they're having in attracting good qualified candidates, uh, retention is a huge issue for us, and we are an employer. Um, and when we first... Every year, we have this conversation, uh, depending upon what the rate of the increase is. You know, one year, I think it was over twenty percent or something like that, and so there was no way we were gonna pass on a twenty percent increase to the employees, and so we made, uh, an informed decision to share that cost with the employees. And it's always for me been about, um, incentivizing to retain and to attract employees here, because the quality of services we're able to provide to the citizens is gonna be dependent upon our ability to recruit and retain the expert staff that we have. And it's... I get your point. I totally get your point, but in the same vein that we pay them with taxpayer money, their salaries, um, this is an incentive to try to keep them, um, and to try to take the sting out. If there's anything we can do to keep them from going to the private sector right now, we should be doing it.
I agree with you a hundred percent. Like I said, I was in business. It was my dollar, and I wanted to keep them people. I understand that completely, but like I said, I think it's gonna be a very hard sell with the public, especially with, uh, the calls we all been getting, you know.
I don't think that... Honestly, from just what we have heard, I don't think nobody disagrees with you.
No.
In what you're saying, but I just think...
I'm just pointing it out.
I think it's where we're at today, to be competitive and retain our people.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead. Sure.
When I went into police work thirty-seven years ago, for me, Franklin County's always been my home, and this is where I've always wanted to work and live. Unfortunately, the people that we're hiring now don't seem to have the same connection to the county and the community as what we, those of us had years ago, and I know the Sheriff's Department sees it, uh, all the departments see it, the people they're hiring. You know, soon as somebody comes along and waves a dollar bill in front of them, they don't care, you know, hey, I've lived in Franklin County all my life. I'm gonna chase that dollar bill. It's a different breed, and I'm sure you see... You've seen it in your line of work, too, and I also remember the years where I got a... When I worked for the Sheriff's Office and the other county employees, we'd get a two to three percent cost of living, and then the insurance go up, take it all away, and I just want to make sure that we don't do that to our employees. I hate it that insurance goes up on anybody, 'cause, you know, it's a burden, but, uh, we owe it to our employees to look after it.
Tim just said something, and I know this is not really related. I started in law enforcement in seventy-eight. I had to furnish my own gun and bullets. I really did, and then they started buying my bullets, but I still had my gun, and it was just in the late nineteen nineties in Craig County, those guys were still furnishing their own car.
Sure were.
Their own car, so that's... That's neither here nor there, but that was just something that I thought of when he was...
When Sheriff Overton took office in nineteen seventy-seven, the Sheriff's Department had to go to the landfill to get tires for the police cars.
You're preaching squire.
I know.
Start your own business.
I know.
Start your own freaking business.
See it, buddy.
I could tell you stories, too, but I'd have to pass out hankages. But like I said, it's just, uh, the point is, I understand it. I agree with y'all, and y'all agree with me, but it's gonna be a hard sell.
You buy your own guns.
I did.
Is that why you never shot a ball?
I picked up rocks. I picked up rocks and then threw them.
I was just gonna ask him. He must have been shooting a lot of people if he was going through all these bullets.
Funny story. You remember that, Eric? Uh, you don't remember that? I don't have anything. I don't have anything, anything else.
I got one more, speaking of bullets.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I started talking to you. The other day, uh, Virginia Code eighteen point two dash three oh eight dash oh three eight, concealed weapons permits. The way I understand this, General Assembly started back, I forgot what year it was, but, uh, they had a fee based on cost, is what it was. It was ten dollars of it was supposed to go to the clerk, court clerk. Thirty-five dollars went to the level of law enforcement to do their checks. Twenty-five of that thirty-five dollars went to the FBI for fingerprints. Five dollars went to the state police to do a background check for them. Several years back, the FBI part of it went away, so that part's not being sent to them anymore. The way I understand it, General Assembly set it up as not to make a revenue intake. It was to be a fee based on cost to the applicant coming in. We're still charging thirty... We're starting fifty dollars, I believe, right now for a fee, and I was looking to think, I think that was thirty thousand dollars basically on our budget annual coming in on revenue. Twenty-five dollars of it's gone. That five-dollar fee going to the state police, they do that same check when you buy a gun for two dollars now, so I need... I think we need to look into that and, uh, maybe adjust that fee down, 'cause I think we're overcharging.
Is that a one-time fee or annual fee?
One-time fee. I think it's five years.
Five years.
Five-year period, and then renewal is ten. Is it?
I think the same cost, 'cause they had...
I think same pay cost. You gotta do the same process.
Fifteen-dollar filing fee for the circuit clerk clerk and the thirty-five for the sheriff's office to go up the back road.
Captain, can you expound on it any... Add to it? You know how many y'all are doing now?
I cannot. I don't have any recent numbers. I know that we have had a lot of fluctuation, uh, typically comes along with presidential elections and things like that come up, uh, but I can't tell you anything intelligible about what our numbers are looking like now.
I was looking at the sheriff's report, uh, the last couple of months. I think it's been over a hundred easy, so a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty, something like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
That all hinges around current events. You take back and, uh, I used... That used to be part of my job with records, was do all the backgrounds for concealed weapon permits, and what was Sandy Hook, twenty fourteen, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen? I was averaging about thirty or forty concealed weapon permits a month, and right after the Sandy Hook shooting, I went to about two hundred a week.
How long does it take the sheriff to do their report, do you know?
So we're actually using our dispatch communications person to work it, so, um, between the background and working on the paperwork, I would just estimate a single one. I'd probably say we have, uh, between moving paper around, probably an hour between each one, and once again, we're doing... I think it teeters around a hundred per month. I think is what we're averaging, but like I said, I can't tell you that for sure.
Is that check overtime pay, or is they doing it as part of the...
That's part of the communications budget, and I don't have a whole lot to do with that, but I do know that they have one person to sign it. It's part of their regular duties, I believe.
Well, like I said, I suggest maybe the staff look into it and see what we come up with. Uh, personally, constitutional, you know, right, I... We shouldn't be charging anything, far as I'm concerned, but that's neither here nor there. A lot of counties are going to this. The VCDL is putting pressures on the counties, and they're going around, and their feeling is they're being... We're charged, and, uh, they're taking county by county. We're gonna be on the list. I think we need to be proactive in it, if we can, 'cause our name's on our list. That's all I got.
We'll look into that. Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion recess until March twenty-fifth at five.
So moved.
Goodbye.